So let me recognize at this point, Councilmember Greg Smith.
Thank you. And welcome. What a fabulous crowd. I have to tell you how proud I am to see so many people from this community come out and say hello to the City Council and to participate in this democracy in action. To see so many people is a great tribute to our community. Thank all of you for being here tonight. To begin the process tonight, I'd like to call forth the singers from the Los Angeles Baptist High School who will open the meeting night with a Star Spangled Banner. Los Angeles Baptist High School is located at Lassen and Woodley in North Hills. Los Angeles Baptist High School provides academic excellence along with a college preparatory educational program that develops a student's intellectual, social, physical, and spiritual growth. The students are here as part of a group called Reflections. They specialize in contemporary Christian music and perform throughout the valley and the city of Los Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen, L.A. Baptist High.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof good and right that our flag was still there. Hope seasons at star-spangled bender yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
What a wonderful way to start the evening. You know, to put this event on took a lot of support from a lot of people. And we want to recognize some people that really made this event happen tonight. First of all, Matthew Satinas from the Greek Orthodox Church, our host tonight. They gave us this room free and they gave us a lot of the food. Also, Brian Walters from the Los Angeles City Clerk's Office, who is responsible for all the things you see before you tonight. Eric Robles from our General Services Department and Jim McBride from Channel 35. And in case you don't know it, folks, if you have cable TV, this is being broadcast live on Channel 35 and you can see it during the rest of the week as well. Also, for those of you who got here on time to get the incredible food that was put out, all these were donations from our community to help you tonight, to give you some little nice food and make you feel comfortable here tonight. So we also want to thank Jazz Dillon from 7-Eleven on Tampa and Rinaldi. Shukat Ali Hussein and Shafik, I'm sorry, Shafik with shortstop Mini Martz and Van Owen in Sepulveda. Andrew and Paul Hassan, owners of Togo's in Baskin Robbins. Donna and Steve Tech, McDonald's Restaurants at Balboa and Lassen. They have on here Greg Saran, but his real name is Gerdip Saran, a good friend of ours from the Northridge Chamber. Gary Greewall from the Village Tandoor Restaurant at Devonshire and Reseda. The Deli Palace at Shoop in Sherman Way in Mr. Zein's District. Vic Malokian from the Armenian National Committee of the San Fernando Valley. Andrew Cassano with the California Restaurant Association. Jack Chan of the San Fernando Valley Chinese Cultural Association. Gary Aclair from Applebee's. Scott Hobart from Subway Sandwiches. Michael Park from the Korean Association. Bill Linden. And Brian Monfort from Laurie's Prime Rib. And last but not least, I certainly want to thank somebody very special who lost a lot of sleep over this meeting and did a lot of work with all the city agencies, working with all the restaurants who donated food, Mr. Brenton Tesler on my staff. And for all of them that are in the room tonight, I'd like all my staff just to raise their hand because you are incredible staff and I appreciate so much your work. We're going to treat you to some more very special entertainment. Mrs. Liz Waldo is a composer, conductor, producer, and violinist, has been a longtime friend of the Northridge community and the entire San Fernando Valley. She divides her time between composing, recording, consulting, offering educational lectures and workshops, directing activities of the Multicultural Music Art Foundation of Northridge, and performing her unique repertoire of musical scores. For 10 years, MCMAFN has been at the forefront of creating a better understanding and appreciation of the arts, uplifting the cultural environment of the San Fernando Valley. From the beginning, we have pursued this goal by conducting and sponsoring unique and dynamic exhibits and performances. She is here tonight to perform songs from her new CD titled "Land of the Golden Dreams." I also ought to say, and I'm sure she'll talk to you in just a moment, but in case you've never seen the facility that she has, it's over on the corner of Nordoff and Wilbur near our district office, and it's available for the public to use under certain circumstances. And she will work with you if you have some musical interests as well. But what you're going to hear tonight is the very special music of the early days of California and the founding time of the city of Los Angeles. So with it, Liz Waldo Denton.
Truly, our music is about the land of golden dreams, and it's slightly different than what you may be accustomed to hearing. As you will notice, we use indigenous instruments, and we're trying to tell the true story of our Queen of Angels, our City of Angels, Los Angeles, and that is our main theme. And now we're going to transport you back into the very beginning. If those of you who are not familiar with the name CalaFia, that is how California's name was born, and it was conceived, it was thought of as being an island. And so, it was controlled by a beautiful Amazon queen, and it was all the soundscapes that have contributed, but right now, one of those, I love to work on the music of the forgotten frontier, that is Russian California from 1812 for the next 30 years. of a jungle, the seashores, all the imaginative things that were in this beautiful story from the 1500s, and that's how California was named. So CalaFia, here we come. And I'm joined back here by the bayon, one of the mandolin and the accordion, and we'll give you just kind of a Romanian theme called Concepcion Theme. Thank you very much. I do wish we had a lot of time to play everything, but maybe next time invite us back. And thank you, Greg, for including us this evening. Thank you so much. Please, my beautiful artist, please take a bow. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Very, very much. This was a wonderful treat in ways to start our meeting. I'm going to ask the public's indulgence, because of the crowd, we have others who are outside who want to get in, and the fire marshal has closed the door. So, in a special agreement with Mr. Smith and some of the people who were here and wanted to register their concern about a particular item affecting this area, we are making a special arrangement to have one subject brought forward at this time to hear public comment, where Mr. Gary Horman will be addressing us of a matter of concern to AYSO in this community. So, members, with your indulgence, before we really call the meeting formally into order, the members who are here, which are nine members of the City Council, are going to ask for a hearing and testimony for Mr. Gary Horman on behalf of the AYSO. Mr. Horman, we have a podium and a microphone, so thank you for...
Thank you. And I want to extend a special thanks to Greg Smith, our host, and other members of the City Council. My name is Gary Holman. I'm here with my daughter Emily for a very special issue. I'm representing, I'm speaking on behalf of dozens of young soccer and baseball players in the Granada Hills area, Northridge, and related areas, and also...
Holman, could you speak, lift the mic a little bit so we can hear you better?
Very good. How's that?
Much better, thank you.
I'll start over. My name is Gary Holman, and I'm an officer with the North, well, we have an organization called Granada Hills Youth Recreation Center, and they in turn represent the North Valley Baseball League as well as North Granada Hills Soccer. We have about 2,000 kids that play on the Jensen Filtration Plant Facility year-round, and the children that you see lined up here represent those 2,000 kids. We have several dozen, and we also represent maybe 4,000 to 6,000 parents. Are you young people out there?
Yeah!
My agenda has changed slightly based on a discussion I had with Greg Smith, and I'll try to focus it accurately. But I will go into a little bit of history. I'll make it brief. I think I have about two minutes, as I understand it. Earlier today, we were advised that our 25-year lease, and which has been renewed recently on a year-to-year basis, would come to an end at the end of this year, forcing thousands of young people to have no place to go to play soccer or baseball. And we, as you can see, mobilized rather quickly. It was just coincidence that the City Council is meeting in Northridge tonight, and we took advantage of that. Now, I was told on good information that we are in fact having, we are being forced to leave at the end of this year. I have been talking to Greg Smith, and he says maybe that's not the case, or that we may be relocating to another space. I'll try to address it very succinctly. The other space that I'm told about is in Silmar, and that has some advantages. It's a large field. It's a little bit hard to get to for some of the people in the western area that we serve towards Porter Ranch. But there's another big feature, and that is that it has a high tension line that runs through the middle, and our engineers advised us it would cost millions of dollars to move that, and that it's not a tenable area. And for that reason, we have felt for some time that we really are best served if we stay where we are. And the reason I bring it up to the entire City Council is, this is really, I think, a city-level issue, where we all face diminishing resources. Our children are some of our resources, our recreational fields are a resource, and of course, water is a resource. But the Metropolitan Water District, the Department of Water and Power, serve us as citizens of the city of Los Angeles, and at the same time, we need to work together to allocate a fair balance in these scarcely, in these ever-growing scarce resources. They want to filter water, we want to raise our children and train them on our soccer and baseball fields. I believe that the city as a whole probably would be wise to address this, not only for us in this instance, although this is the one that hit the wall today, but all throughout the city. We have a constant need for more recreational facilities than we seem to have. I meet regularly with the manager, director rather, at the Department of Recreation and Parks, and they face a continuing crunch. Pettit Park in this area is overburdened, and kids are just not able to participate at the level that they were designed for. And some of it has to do, I suppose, with development. Some of it has to do with unused public utility land and the people working in conjunction with the city to balance the resources. And that's what I'm asking for here tonight. I'm actually asking for a proposal, and I know you don't make any decisions, and I'm not even sure if you ask questions, but I have this proposal to you. I think we all owe the city, the children of this area, more. They're sort of unrepresented. They don't vote. But their parents vote. And what we need is a task force to work together on a city level between the various public entities that own land that may be available, and with the Department of Recreation and Parks that has advised me, they're constantly struggling with this issue, and that's why I, I don't mean any offense to you, Councilman Smith, but we're a multi-district region. You know, we're 60% out of your district, 40% in Alex Padilla's district, and a scattering, I think, outside of both districts. That is really the sum and substance of what I'm here before. I'm asking on behalf of the thousands of kids that are there today, the thousands of kids that we hope to serve in the many years to come in the future, much as we have the past quarter century, that they have a continuing place to go in our neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. And I'll end with kind of a joke. Among the various letters that were written when we've been kind of struggling with this was one to Governor Schwarzenegger, who said, "Well, this is really a city issue. I think you should talk to the manager of the city of Granada Hills." So, couldn't find him, but we found you, and we're here today, and we do solicit your help. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Holman. And while you were speaking, we actually have now a quorum, the City Council, and I think Mr. Smith would like to address you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate so much you're coming here tonight. And I want everybody here that's with AYSO, raise your hand so they can see how many are here.
Raise your hand.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And North Alley Baseball.
And North Alley Baseball, truly. The other half of Guyrick. We are not allowed to discuss the matter tonight, unfortunately, by council rules.
I understand.
I do want to let you know, first of all, I think you know, first of all, I was a coach there once at AYSO. It is certainly in my heart and in my soul, and my staff wants to work with you and has been trying to work with you in recent months, and we will get together, and I think we need to take all these people here tonight, and you and I together need to go to MWD and talk to those folks, and show them what the resolve is of this community, that we are not going to just give up and go away. And I thank all of you for being here tonight. This is democracy in action. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
All right. We are going to begin by having the City Clerk call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti Grohan Labange Ledo Miskowski Parks Perry Reyes Smith V. Rigoso Weiss Sign Padilla, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right. The official, the City Council is officially in session. We are going to begin by a Pledge of Allegiance, and let me ask Commissioner Allen Scoban, our member of the valley, a resident of the valley, Police Commissioner, to lead us in the pledge. Would everyone please rise?
As we are so fortunate to gather here tonight to meet with our city leaders and with each other, I ask you to think of what the flag represents. For me, the letters of the flag represent faith and love to America and our God. So with that, I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for the honor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, let me say good evening and introduce ourselves and give you some of the rundown of what we're going to be doing tonight in interacting as your City Council and hearing from you on issues that are on the agenda as well as issues that are not on the agenda. I am Cindy Miskowski. I'm the Councilmember of the 11th Council District, and I am the Council President pro tem. Our Council President, Alex Padilla, was not able to be here tonight, so I'm here in his stead along with the other members of the City Council. To my left, who, the person who's already been introduced, our host this evening, Councilmember Greg Smith of the 12th Council District. Next to Greg is Councilmember Tony Cardenas of the 6th Council District. Then we have Councilmember Eric Garcetti of the 13th Council District. From the 2nd Council District, Councilwoman Wendy Gruel. And then I'll start on this side, on my left, from the 15th Council District, Councilmember Janice Hahn. The 4th Council Seat, Councilmember Tom Labange. Council District Number 10, Martin Ludlow. Councilmember Ed Reyes from Council District Number 1. And from just across the boundary from here, Councilmember Dennis Sign from the 3rd Council We are also joined in our efforts up here by Council staff. To my right is the City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney Dion O'Connell, who makes sure we do things legally. And we have the Council Clerk, Ms. Maria Kostrenchetsky, here, and she's assisted by the Vote Clerk, Judy Clerk. Judy Clark. Just some procedural housekeeping items. Copies of this evening's agenda are available in the back of the room along with Council District information and contact information. The Council will consider the items listed on this evening's agenda in numerical order. Some of the items with, may be approved without discussion where they are consent items. However, any item that is on the agenda tonight can be called special by a Councilmember, meaning that that Councilmember wants to engage with discussion on that item. If the item is brought up special, it will be held until we do all the consent calendar items and then go back to those items. Members of the public who wish to speak on any items are requested to complete a speaker card. Those are also available in the back of the room if they wish to address us on those items and hand them to the Sergeant-at-Arms to make sure we get them up here. The Council will also provide an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda, and I see we've already gotten a number of cards submitted, so we will get to that as well. When the debate on an item is completed, I will ask the clerk to take an oral roll call on the vote. For those of you who know, down at City Hall, we have an electronic voting system, but we will do it the old-fashioned way here and voice vote on items as they are called. The vote will be taken in alphabetical order, and every member who is present must vote either for or against the item. The clerk will then announce the votes on the items in the tally. For this evening's meeting, Councilmembers requesting to address the Council will raise their hands, and I will recognize them in the order that I see their hands. I believe at this time, I will now turn the matter, turn the meeting back over to Councilmember Mr., is Mr. Cardenas going to go next, or Mr. Smith?
He doesn't know it.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to deviate just for a moment from our agenda for a very special event, and that is one of our colleagues has hit the wall. He's now 41 years old. Tony Cardenas from the 6th District. Today is his birthday. Do we have a cake?
The 4th Council Seat, council member Tom Labange. Council District Number 10, Martin Ludlow. Council Member Ed Reyes from Council District Number 1. And from just across the boundary from here, council member Dennis Zine from the 3rd Council We are also joined in our efforts up here by council staff. To my right is the city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Dion O'Connell, who makes sure we do things legally. And we have the council clerk, Ms. Maria Kostrenchits here, and she's assisted by the vote clerk, Judy Clerk. Judy Clark. Just some procedural housekeeping items. Copies of this evening's agenda are available in the back of the room, along with council district information and contact information. The council will consider the items listed on this evening's agenda in numerical order. Some of the items with, may be approved without discussion where they are consent items. However, any item that is on the agenda tonight can be called special by a council member, meaning that that council member wants to engage with discussion on that item. If the item is brought up special, it will be held until we do all the consent calendar items, and then go back to those items. Members of the public who wish to speak on any items are requested to complete a speaker card. Those are also available in the back of the room if they wish to address us on those items, and hand them to the sergeant-at-arms to make sure we get them up here. The council will also provide an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And I see we've already gotten a number of cards submitted, so we will get to that as well. When the debate on an item is completed, I will ask the clerk to take an oral roll call on the vote. For those of you who know, down at City Hall, we have an electronic voting system, but we will do it the old-fashioned way here, and voice vote on items as they are called. The vote will be taken in alphabetical order, and every member who is present must vote either for or against the item. The clerk will then announce the votes on the items in the tally. For this evening's meeting, council members requesting to address the council will raise their hands, and I will recognize them in the order that I see their hands. I believe at this time, I will now turn the matter, turn the meeting back over to council member, is Mr. Cardenas going to go next, or Mr. Smith?
He doesn't know it.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to deviate just for a moment from our agenda for a very special event, and that is one of our colleagues has hit the wall, he's now 41-years-old. Tony Cardenas from the 6th District, today is his birthday. Do we have a cake? Where's the cake?
I'm not going to have to blow you out today.
No, Monday the Fire Marshal's gonna be there.
Well, don't tell the Fire Marshal.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tony. Happy birthday to you.
Before the Fire Marshal.
One, two, three. Get to old for that. Thank you. I was wishing that I could spend the evening with my family, and they're here. So my wish came true. Thank you very much, Greg, and colleagues for this nice surprise. And my wife, Norma, my son Christian, my son Andres, and our daughter Alina, say hello. People have been asking me, you're 41 now, do you feel old? Well, I played basketball like I shouldn't have last night, and I'm limping around today, so I feel my age, that's for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We will now recognize Mr. Smith for some other official presentations today to the district.
Thank you, Madam President, I appreciate the opportunity. You know, this community endures many things. We have endured tragic earthquakes that really decimated our community. For many times over the decades, we've had to fight off disastrous fires, and occasionally even a flood. Nothing as severe as Mrs. Han had to endure recently, where she had a snowstorm in Watts, but certainly, we've had our share. Last year, on October of 2004, there was dangerous fires that destroyed California. Huge amounts, 750,000 acres. 3,500 homes were lost, and over $1 billion. Thankfully, the brave men and women of the Los Angeles Fire Department, Los Angeles Police Department, were able to stop the fires before they hit the communities of Porter Ranch, and Chatsworth, and Northridge, and Granada Hills in the 12th District. While the council has recognized the efforts of our firefighters, tonight, I want to honor citizens of the 12th Council District and volunteers who, behind the scenes, provided aid to firefighters and residents who were potentially impacted by the fires. The people here tonight stopped what they were doing at a moment's notice, and spent hours, and in some cases, days, offering shelter to families nearest the fires, support to our firefighters, and most importantly, a friendly face and caring support in very trying times. The following groups spearheaded the volunteer effort. At Granada Hills High School, Principal Charlene Krieger coordinated efforts to transform their gymnasium into an evacuation center. Is Charlene here? Charlene? Nope? Okay. Jonathan and Christina Chance, who with the help of their neighbors turned their Porter Ranch home into a firefighter rest area, allowing firefighters working long shifts a place to shower and eat. I know they are here, because I saw one of them here earlier, so they're over here. Thank you, thank you. Sean, Kevin, and Debbie, and Chase Okan, Betty and Bob Norberg, Paula Crasium and her sons Daniel, Stephen Crasium from Shepherd of the Hills Church opened their doors in aid to the affected families. Are any of the people here from Shepherd of the Hills? There's one. Over there? There they are. Can't see them all there. Oh, thank you. Whole Foods of Porter Ranch Market provided numerous sandwiches, drinks, snacks to firefighters, the media, and police personnel who were at the scene. Is anyone here from Whole Foods? Over there, thank you so much. And in Chatsworth, the church at Rocky Peak, Pastor Dave Cox, and I know Dave is here, because I talked to Dave, where's, there he is, Dave. Also, if I may, Dave is also a reserve police officer with the Los Angeles Police Department, as well as his role at the church. Thank you. And members Renee Lifter, Trent Lewis, Lindsay King, Nanette DeLacy, quickly set up a hot food kitchen and coordinated staging area in the church parking lot. Thank you so much for your efforts. Ladies and gentlemen, when I think, I think of the great things of our community, is no matter what the disaster, no matter the problem, we all pull together to help each other, and these people did extraordinary things to pull together and help our Porter Ranch, Chatsworth, Granada Hills, and Northridge communities. So, thank you to all the volunteers who cared, and truly were caring neighbors, and cared for their residents of the community. Thank you so much. Now, following along with the theme of what was brought to us tonight with the AYSO and youth ballistics, we have some very special residents here tonight. Yeah, they're going to come up here. If I could ask the kids from Northridge Knights, and Pop Warner, please come on up, stand up on the stage. Come on over. Like Mr. Ludlow, I think, I started off as a young boy playing Pop Warner football, and it was a great experience. We have some real champions here tonight, and we're going to recognize them. There can be no doubt that this community is very strong when it comes to youth sports. You saw AYSO earlier, baseball, and now football. In Northridge. All the other teams, all the teams, all the teams up here. Northridge Knights were established in 1962 as one of 20 Pop Warner clubs in the Valley Conference. Many of the former Northridge Knights have gone on to participate in college football and college cheerleading as well. Tonight, we are here to honor the coaches, players, and cheerleaders of the Northridge Knights, three-division champions. The undefeated 11-0 Gremlin Division Northridge Knights, which cover ages 8-9-year-old. The Tiny Mike Division Northridge Knights, which cover the ages 10-11-years-old. And the Midget Division, where I first started playing football, the Northridge Knights was covered the ages of 13-14-year-old. The Midget Division Northridge Knights won every game and every tournament, including the tournament in Las Vegas, where they won the California Bowl. Congratulations, kids. All right, champions. Each one of these young people will be receiving a certificate from the City of Los Angeles, congratulating you on your great accomplishment, and we're all so proud of you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for coming to the banner of Northridge. Madam President, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think we're going to get a picture there. Madam Clerk, I believe, it's time to call the agenda items.
The first order of business, Madam President, is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Ludlow seconds, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
The commendatory resolutions are also approved.
On the regular agenda, items, excuse me, items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 6.
Members, we have items 1 through 6 before us. We've had Mr. Ludlow call item 1 special, I think item 2 and 3 we will call special as well, since they're all related. So items 1, 2, and 3 will be called special. Does any? Item 6 is also called special by Mr. Smith.
And that leaves items 4 and 5 before the council.
All right.
The next items then would be items 7 through 21, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Wait, wait, we're going to have to, we have to have a little quiet in the room. Madam Clerk, could you go through those items that are before us again?
The next items would be items 7 through 21, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, Mr. Garcetti has called item 7 special. Members, we are looking through items 7 through 21. There are no cards that are submitted, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing on those items. Any other specials, members, 7 through 21. All right, then those matters are before us for consideration and a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Groh, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Reyes, Smith, Zine. 10 eyes.
There are, those are all approved then, and those items are taken care of? Yes, we are also going to have, we have a special agenda before us that we will call the roll on. We will recess our current agenda and go into the special agenda.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Groh, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right. Let's call the items that are on that agenda.
The first items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 1 and 2, 10 votes are required for consideration on those items.
All right, those items are before us. Members, are there any items on the special agenda, item 1 or 2, that anyone would like to have called special? All right, Mr. Labange calls item 2 on the special agenda. So that leaves 1. Does anyone have any questions on item number 1? If not, then that is before us. Please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Groh, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Reyes, Smith, Weiss, Zine. 10 eyes.
All right, that matter is approved?
The next item, Madam President, is a closed-session item, and I believe the city attorney is here to present a report on it, and there are two speakers cards.
But that is a closed item. We will hold the speaker cards at this time, and hold that matter until the end of the agenda, and then call the speaker cards on it, before we consider it and go into closed session.
Okay. I believe the city attorney can handle that in open session, if you wish to take that up now.
I think we will hold for just a moment, because we do now have a special guest, who I think wants to join with council member Smith for another presentation. So let me recognize Mr. Smith for a very special presentation.
We're very pleased to have with us tonight, ladies and gentlemen, our great Chief of Police, William Bratton. I would like to ask Linda Marie Bazan to please come forward from Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Whereas, I hope she got in.
My machine might be holding outside.
It's Lynn Marie? There she is. Ladies and gentlemen, today, we introduced a motion in council that it will make a major impact, I believe, in the way we do business dealing with drunk driving. And while I cannot discuss the details of the matter, because it was just introduced this evening, I'm sure you'll be reading about it in the paper tomorrow, but we're here to honor the Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And Lynn Maria Bazan is the, and her mother Iris, Georgie, who is here tonight, is the LA Chapter President of Mothers Against Drunk Driving. In the 20 years, little over 20 years, that Mothers Against Drunk Driving have been in existence, they have been the leaders in the nation in driving public policy and cracking down against drunk drivers, the horrible disease of alcoholism, as well as the horrible effects that drunk driving brings upon society, the unintended consequences, the people that are killed innocently by drunk drivers. In their 20-plus years of service to this community, Mothers Against Drunk Driving have lowered the number of arrests and drunk-driving accidents in the United States by 40%. They have made a major impact in the understanding and awareness of drunk driving, the ills it brings upon society, the harm it brings, the hurt it brings, loved ones being lost. They've been, truly at the forefront of this national debate. And it started here in California, and I'm so proud to have them with us here tonight. I'm proud to have their support of the motion which he introduced today, which will bring us another tool in cracking down against drunk drivers. But we want to present to them tonight, and I'm going to ask the Chief of Police to speak also about this, because I know he feels passionate about it as well, present this resolution to the Mothers Against Drunk Driving for their incredible contribution to society, and in particular, to the community of Los Angeles. Lynn?
Let the chief speak, and then we have to do that. Thank you. I had the opportunity this morning to appear with the council member, and he'll be discussing the matter that we presented to the media this morning. But we were joined this morning by representatives from Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and they are an incredible, incredible organization, working on an extraordinarily difficult situation, the issue of drunk drivers. Every day in the City of Los Angeles, we arrest 40, on average, 40 people for drunk driving, every day, day in and day out. Every one of those drunk drivers is a potential accident, potential fatality, potential injuries waiting to happen. Through their efforts, coordinated with police, political leadership, such as we have here at the city council, Mayor Han, we have made a difference. But the reality in the state of California over the last three years is the number of accidents involving drunk drivers has been going up. We need to reverse that trend, and we need everybody's help to reverse that trend. But we are fortunate that we have the leadership of this great organization, and is represented by these two women here this evening. So I am just very pleased to be, once again, in the valley, always great to be in the valley, and to be here to participate in honoring these two wonderful women and their
Well, I would like to thank the City of Los Angeles in putting this motion forward, and being a forward-thinking city, and leading the nation in this cause, and keeping the citizens of the streets of Los Angeles that much more safer. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and Chief, and the women of Mothers Against Drunk Driving. We all know your name, I've seen the pins out there, you're doing good work for all of us. And as soon as the photo is ready, or finished, I'd like to call Mr. Smith back to the podium, and the Northridge Knights, who he just awarded, have a special presentation that they would like to make to him. So would the representatives of the Northridge Knights come forward to the podium with Mr. Mr. Smith, you're supposed to, oh, whichever is the more convenient.
My name is Shelley Healy, I'm the president of the Northridge Knights, and we're hopefully trying to get them back in, they've been shuffled back and forth. There's over 100 Northridge Knights here that wanted to make this presentation to Mr. Smith, but hopefully they'll be here. In the meantime, we just wanted to give you this jersey, because, to play football in.
All right. Outstanding. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry that everybody couldn't get in tonight, and I hope they'll get in soon here. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President, back to you.
Thank you again, Councilmember Smith, and to the community members who you had here to honor. Madam Clerk, we are going to return to the agenda, and I believe we were on item 3 of the special agenda, so there are two speaker cards that were submitted on that item. Does the city attorney want to present first, the issuer, call the speaker cards? All right, for special item 3 on the special agenda, let me call Stephen Saranana Lamson, Hugo Pacheco, and Mary Leos Pacheco. The city attorney, okay, are those persons who I called able to come forward to this podium to address us?
Special 3 on the agenda, the city attorney.
Yes, I'd like to ask Joyce, would you please take my spot, because I know you turned in a card, and I don't know why you not, have not asked her to please to speak, because she's the one that has brought this matter before the council and really needs to speak about it. Thank you.
All right.
Yes. My name's Joyce Stillard, and I would like to read and submit a letter. Honorable Council President and Honorable Council Members, please be advised that on March 8, 2004, the Wall Loss Memorias held a ceremony in which the ground at 3540 Mission Road, Lincoln Park, was consecrated, where the site of the AIDS memorial is to be constructed. This ceremony was officiated by Father Peter Lampert, a priest with the Saint Sophia's Greek Orthodox Church, and a board member of the Wall Loss Memorias. A cross and holy water were used. The origination of this project at the Lincoln Park location was an annual day to honor those Latinos who have died of AIDS, Noche de la Smemorias. Let me repeat that again, Noche de la Smemorias. The ceremony began at Sacred Heart Church in Lincoln Heights and proceeded to Lincoln Park. This last year, the liturgical ceremony began at Our Lady Help of Christians Catholic Church in Lincoln Heights and proceeded to Lincoln Park. Why are you entangling the city of Los Angeles with a Catholic church and the Greek Orthodox Church? Again, I will repeat that since I stumbled. Why are you entangling the city of Los Angeles with a Catholic church and the Greek Orthodox Church? Thank you, and I'd like to turn this into a city clerk, if you could direct me.
Thank you to the council for this opportunity to address you in regards to item number three in the special meeting agenda. You know, I think all of you have to ask yourself, what are we voting on here? You know, back in February 3rd, you voted on an extension for this group to continue the process of putting their memorial in Lincoln Park, and yet, if you ask some people, the contract was never engaged. If you ask others, the contract has expired. So what was it that you voted on on February 3rd? You know, I first of all want to thank Mr. Labonge for the communication that I received from him. Mr. Labonge, you're the only person in City Council that actually communicated with me directly, I appreciate that, I really do. You know, having that opportunity to kind of engage as we have, I think is very important. But you know, it's really funny, because when you submitted the audit that was presented by Las Memorias, there were some discrepancies there. What I couldn't understand is that here it says that this thing is going to cost $744,000 and some change, and that they've raised $743,000 and some change. It's very strange that you have a $1,000 difference between how much they've raised and how much they're going to spend. And yet, recall, sir, that they wanted to come to your committee and ask you for an additional $150,000 because they had a shortfall. But the audit here is listed as the 31st of December in 2003. Then again, they came to the City Council by way of Mr. Parks's motion, and they wanted an additional $150,000. So now we're talking about $300,000 above and beyond what they said they've raised to make this thing happen. So ladies and gentlemen, I know you're going to go into closed session, obviously there was a difficult, or some kind of problem with this vote that occurred, I think you all have to ask yourselves, what is going on with this project? They were given an extension until the 31st of this month, today, to finish this thing, and all we have in Lincoln Park right now is a hole and a fence where our kids can't play, and our community cannot participate with the things that happened in our park on Saturdays and Sundays. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have the city attorney here who's going to address as soon as the public hearing is over. Please, Mary Leos Pacheco.
Yes, because you did not call Joyce Stillard, I'd like to give my time up to Hugo Pacheco.
All right, I did call Hugo, but that's, and I found Joyce's card, it was in item three on the regular agenda, not the special agenda, so she was able to speak.
You know, it's a sad day when you have to come back here again, and again, and again, and address the leaders of our city, who have a fiduciary duty to take care of your money. And all they, all they do is they keep giving it away, giving it away, for projects that we in our community don't want or need, and yet, and yet they can't seem to find money to do the other projects that we need. We don't have enough spark space in our community already. I'm talking about all of Los Angeles. And yet they're willing to give it away for a project nobody needs. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more card submitted by Samuel Rios. Rios, want to speak on this?
Good evening, council members. My name is Samuel Rios. I have come before the council in previous times. I'm a resident in Lincoln Heights, and a lot of the residents understand where this organization is coming from, you know, we need this for education, we need this, we need this. But we don't really need it in Lincoln Heights. As you've already heard from other speakers, there's been discrepancies in monies, it's been bounced around. I just found out about this special emergency thing that came up, and I barely made it here on time. So I wish I would have been better prepared, and there are many, many residents in Lincoln Heights that were unable to attend because of this short notice. So I just wish to let you know that there are many people that are very, very angry and very upset that they weren't able to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. This matter was placed on the agenda at the request of the city attorney. I think the city attorney has something they want to address.
Thank you, Madam President. Mark Brown, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Very briefly, on the 3rd of February of this year, the council approved a recommendation of the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners to approve an amendment to a contract providing a 90-day extension for completion of the Wall Loss Memorias project. Prior to doing so, the council approved an amending motion requesting the CAO to complete a fiscal review of the project within 30 days of its completion. It has been alleged in a letter to council members dated March 2nd, that the council's action approving the oral amending motion violated the Brown Act because it was not on the published agenda of that date. While we believe the council's action did not, in fact, violate the Brown Act, the council may remove the potential for litigation of this matter by taking the following action. The council may at this time reconsider that item, item 43, that was acted on on the 3rd of February of this year in connection with council file number 00-1140. Secondly, the council, if they do reconsider this matter, may at this time reaffirm the action taken on the matter that was on the printed agenda on that date, approval of amendment number one, providing the 90-day extension for completion of the project. And third, the council may at this time, if it so chooses, rescind the action taken on the oral amending motion, which is the matter that has been complained of, and that the council has been demanded to either cure or correct. After the council's action, the city clerk should also be instructed to notify forthwith in writing the party demanding correction or cure of item number 43. And they should be notified forthwith of the action taken by the council at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Let me recognize at this point, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to follow the advice of our city attorney and reconsider the items so we can have official action taken today, and do the proper notifications to ensure that we're following procedures according to the advice of our city attorney. I'd like to have a second on that.
Mr. Ledlow seconds that motion, so first we are taking on the motion to reconsider item 43 of the agenda notice as specified by the city attorney. Madam Clerk, please call the vote on that.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labonge, Ledlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Zine.
Ten ayes.
All right, that matter is properly reconsidered. Mr. Ledlow?
Just a procedural question, because I know we're not, we don't have our buttons. Are we gonna, as we do the roll call, are you gonna pause for the verbal? Unless you do a no. Okay, thank you.
All right, that is now clear. So we then have the recommendation of the city attorney to rescind the action of item 43 of the agenda noticed, and send it forward for notification, and reaffirming the earlier action of the committee report before the amendment.
That's right. Reaffirm the original action and rescind the amending motion.
Mr. Labonge?
Mr. City Attorney, could you explain in non-legal terms exactly what we're doing?
Yes. What you had-
For all the non-lawyers who are here, I'm not a lawyer, so I need this help.
What you had before you at your prior meeting on the agenda was a matter to approve a contract amendment that would extend by 90 days the time period to complete a project. There's no objection to the council's action taken on that matter. So what you've done is, now you're reconsidering that action, but you're going to, again, if you vote to reaffirm, you're going to, again, take that action or confirm that you took that action. On the other matter that was objected to, that matter was an oral amending motion that merely requested a report back to you on a fiscal review of the project. And that's the matter objected to, and if you follow the course that we've laid out and advised, you would be rescinding that action. It would be as though you never approved that amending motion.
But will we ever get a report back?
You could notice that for a future meeting, a future time.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
All right, are there any other questions or comments by members of the council on the action that Mr. Reyes has moved per the city attorney's direction? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labonge, Ledlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Zine.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is the action taken, which is pursuant to the letter the city attorney had received, and further action, if it were to be taken, would be on a duly noticed agenda.
Thank you.
All right, I believe in our special agenda, we also called, Mr. Labonge called item two special, on the special agenda.
Just to put on item number two that we have here, this is the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and I think that great coach who particularly spoke about the need for open space, this is an opportunity for city agencies to acquire public land for open space in the Santa Monica Mountains, when lands become default, et cetera. So I wanted to bring that to the public's attention, that when we have the opportunity to acquire lands for the good of the people, we try to acquire them, and this is what is just taking place on this particular item. And could any city attorney speak to this at all? So is that explanation understood? We're acquiring lands that are default to build open space in the Santa Monica Mountains, but at the same time, I would just say, thank you for the applause back there from Las Feliz, I like that, one of my constituents, but at the same time, I think we got to acquire open space for the flatlands, although this is not the issue, for recreation space, for sports fields, for young girls and rung boys. So anyway, I want to make the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes?
I think it's very appropriate that we acknowledge the fact that we are going down that process and identifying these opportunities, just in, as a point of information for some of the folks that spoke about we're losing park space in Lincoln Park. Naturally, we're bringing back much more vital active space. We're just finishing an area on which, it's called playground for unbound activities. These are playground equipment for young people who are physically challenged, who are in wheelchairs, who don't get the opportunity to participate in playgrounds. And I think it's also crucial to point out that we have close to approximately 75 new acres of park space that we will be introducing to District One. We should be introducing 40 acres of new park space, 20 acres, which will be dedicated to soccer fields, basketball courts, baseball diamonds, water, play areas for children. So the park issue is being addressed, and I want to thank the state of California, as well as my colleagues, Wreckin' Parks, for their hard work in pushing this kind of relief. We get a sense of density in this room, right? We're all packed in here in this one little room, and we have people waiting outside to get in. Well, that's how it feels in some parts of the city, when you don't have enough park space, when people are trying to find places just to have a picnic. So I just want to thank my colleagues for their support, and I'll thank the members of my district that came down to this part of the city to participate in a democracy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine?
Question for the city attorney. The residents of the area from Ventura Boulevard to Sunset, the mountain area, have assessed through a vote, $40 a year fee for purchase of open space, and the question is, will those dollars be used to obtain the properties in question?
Mr. Zine, the assigned city attorney to that, to this item, was not able to be here tonight. I could convey that question to them and get back to you.
Okay, because I know there was a concern with many of the residents in Tarzana, Woodland Hills, and the area from Mulholland to Ventura Boulevard that are being assessed, and it encompasses numerous communities, Encino, Laurel Canyon, et cetera, the $40 a parcel a year for the next, if I'm not mistaken, 20 years, or 30 years, or a long time. And the question is, what's that money going to go for? And if that would go to help obtain this property that's in default, to help let them know that residents in that area, that that money will be used to that purchase? If we could get that answer, and we could also notify, I know we've got TPOA, Helen Norman here, the president of TPOA, and there's some other association representatives here, even from Canoga Park. But I'm concerned with those areas of Woodland Hills, Tarzana, and my district, that the residents understand that those dollars are going to be used for purchasing these properties that are in default.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Let me just suggest that, one, I did hear a question from the audience saying, what was Mr. Labonge, meaning when he said defaulted properties? These are tax defaulted properties, meaning that the property owners themselves have not paid the property taxes for a given period of time, for a number of years, and so they go on to the tax default rule, and they are able to be picked up if somebody's willing to pay the back taxes. In this instance, the Mountain Recreation and Conservancy Authority is going to pay the back taxes, the government agencies have the first ability to buy these properties if they keep them for designated public purpose, and the designated public purpose will be open space. And in response to Mr. Zine's question, I think we should bring in a motion officially to ask the Mountain and Recreation Conservancy and Trust to come and tell us what pieces they are purchasing and how they're purchasing, they have to report to their own Santa Monica Mountain Commission, but I think to have a report to the city council on the pieces that are being purchased with that assessed dollar would be worthwhile probably every year. So I will work with Mr. Labonge, Mr. Sois, and yourself to bring in that motion.
And another question, if that property is occupied, if it's not open space, if it's occupied with some type of structure, what the plan is for that particular structure? If it's going to remain, be sold, be renovated, some of these properties may not be vacant, they may be occupied.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge?
I just got to say, with your good suggestion there, I'm going to put a motion in to ask that Mr. Edmondson of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy give the council an update on the effective process of this to build more parkland, and also the challenge to find more sports fields and other things that meet the needs of young and old alike.
All right. Then we have before us the matter for the approval of the purchase by the conservancy for these open space pieces. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labonge, Ledlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Zine.
Ten ayes.
All right, that matter is approved. That completes the special agenda items. Mr. Garcetti asked that item one go forthwith, we will send items two and three forthwith as well, so that those can be completed. We will now adjourn our special meeting and go back to the regular meeting agenda for the items that were called special. But before we do that, Mr. Smith had some other special people he wanted to introduce to us.
Just a very brief introductions, and somebody that I believe a lot of you know, and I saw him a minute ago, I hope he's still here, our Valley Bureau Chief of the Los Angeles Police Department, former captain out of Foothill Division, Ron Bergman. Ron, are you still back here? He was back there. Okay. And for many of people, you don't know this lady, she just joined the Los Angeles Police Department, Devonshire Division, which is a division that works for most of you here in the audience tonight, our new captain for patrol, Captain Anita Ortega. Captain? I think Captain's been with us, what, a week and a half now, about? A month? Very good. Well, welcome. Yeah, full report, we want a full report. Anyway, if you don't know her already, come on and say hello, I'm sure she'd love to see you. And finally, two very special guests are in the audience, I think an awful lot of you know her, the lady that the staff calls the First Lady of the 12th District, my wife, Christine. And the man that got me started in public service and understood the importance of working for community, who's never been to a city council meeting before, but he's here with me tonight, my father, John Smith. And just coming in the door, I see the famous, what we call the hanging judge of the San Fernando Valley, Judge O'Michael Luris. Mike? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, what is next before us?
On the regular agenda, item number one was called special, and there are five amending motions that have been distributed to the council members.
All right, let us consider items one, two, and three at the same time, since they all deal with the issue of news racks and a proposed ordinance. And I believe at this time, I know that there are a number of people who want to speak on this matter, and let me just inform the members of the council that for items one, two, and three, a number of speaker cards have been submitted. But we have had public hearings on all of these items in committee on a number of occasions, and it would take a motion on the city council to open the public hearing on that matter. Mr. Smith?
Madam President, in light of the fact that there are so many people that want to speak tonight, and this has been a process that really involves the community, I move for a 10-minute public hearing on both sides.
All right. Is there any objection to, by members of the council, to a 10-minute public hearing on both sides? All right, without objection? All right, without objection, we will do that. I'm wondering, Mr. Smith, if you would like, as chair of Public Works Committee, to present the subject first, so that as people make their public comments, so the audience will know what we're going to be talking about.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Works Committee of the council actually began about three years ago, working with the Board of Public Works to determine how we'd go about enforcing the city's ordinance on news racks. So those are the newspaper racks you see throughout the city of Los Angeles. The Board of Public Works instituted a process, a review, made a recommendation to the committee of the Board, of the Public Works Committee of the council in July of this past year. Under Mrs. Perry's leadership of the committee at that time, the committee rejected unanimously the recommendations of the Board of Public Works, and asked for a new process to begin in which we would determine what the council felt was the important and salient issues. At that time, there are a number of people who are here in the audience tonight, who began a coalition called Clean, which was bringing together representatives from the Business Improvement District, particularly Mrs. Grul's district, as well as Mr. Labange's district and other parts of the city, who banded together with neighborhood councils and chambers of commerce throughout the city of LA, and went all the way to the West Side and the Harbor, and expanded across the city, who brought forth to the council numerous concerns about the existing ordinance and how best we should proceed with a new ordinance. Through the past seven months, under the leadership of my staff and myself, and Mr. Labange, as a member of the committee, and Ms. Perry, we have negotiated with the newspaper industry and the neighborhood councils and Clean to find a proposal that we felt was in the best interest of the city of Los Angeles. Before you today is the Board of Public, excuse me, the Public Works Committee's unanimous recommendation on a new ordinance that would limit the number of racks per block to four for every section, it would limit the color that could be used throughout the city of Los Angeles, it would limit the size and the location, it would protect certain zones of the city where we would not allow news racks, those primarily being of historical significance. And so before you today is the Board, is the Public Works Committee's recommendation, a unanimous recommendation, we believe is in the best interest of the city, to clean up the city of Los Angeles, to provide some decorum to our communities, and provide a clean look. We worked very hard on this. Up until a week ago, we felt we had an agreement with the newspaper industry, 90% of what you see before you today was agreed upon by the industry, as well as Clean and the spokesmen from neighborhood councils. And so the recommendation before you today comes to you after a lot of work, by an awful lot of people working together, trying to find a consensus. As we came down to the last few days, there was only a few points of contention, although I have heard now that there may be a lawsuit already pending, even though we haven't even passed the ordinance yet. So with that, I think it'd be propitious to now have the public come forward and speak. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and we have put together the cards from those who submitted cards on items one and two, both for and against proposal and general comment. So let us begin, I'm going to call a number of names, if you could line up, it'll save a little bit of time of getting to the microphone on a reasonably short period of time here for public speaking. These are those in favor of the ordinance. David Berg, Helen Itrea Norman, Stephen San. Could you each come and stand behind the microphone? Mr. Berg, please begin.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. It's my honor to speak tonight in favor of the proposed ordinance. This ordinance is a model of citizen participation in government. A coalition of neighborhood councils, residence associations, business groups, business property owners, worked very hard with the council and the Public Works Committee to help draft a, an ordinance that we believe will become a model for the United States. It balances rights of expression versus our right to have an aesthetically pleasing city. I want to thank councilmember Smith in particular, and councilmembers Labange and Perry, his colleagues on the Public Works Committee. I want to give special thanks to councilmember Smith's staff, including, of course, John Lee, who worked tirelessly on this. I want to personally thank my councilmember, Wendy Grul. Studio City, my area, has been devastated by the publishers' real abuse of their privilege of using our sidewalks, and we have had tremendous leadership in Wendy Grul, and her support has been instrumental. I want to thank Chris Westhoff from the City Attorney's Office, Lynn Ozawa from the CLA's office. The litigation threat is baseless, councilmembers, there's no support in law for it, and I am quite certain that you will have ample volunteer legal help in this community to help support and defend this ordinance when it is passed. We've negotiated in good faith. Unfortunately, the publishers recently have flaunted the existing ordinance and this prospective ordinance. We've read that in the Los Angeles Business Journal, that just recently, the New Tribune publication has spent over $1 million placing 6,000 blue news racks on our streets, knowing full well that this ordinance is about to be passed, and we would ask that any news racks that are placed within 120 days of the adoption of this ordinance be immediately removed. And we would particularly stress that no publisher be permitted to claim a hardship exemption based on the placement of news racks at this time, knowing full well that they will become illegal. That would be extreme bad faith.
Thank you, Mr. Berg, I'm going to ask you to try to...
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And once again, thank you for all of your support.
And again, if I can ask people to be as concise as possible, we'll get more of the speakers in. Helen Itrea Norman, followed by Stephen San and Jay Handel.
My name is Helen Itrea Norman. I represent the Tarzana Property Owners Association, the community of Tarzana. What I have to say is redundant, actually, but someone with me tonight just said that she counted 26 news racks at the corner of Reseda and Ventura Boulevard. That's just a small part of the problem. I, I'm all in favor of literacy and reading, but it's way overdue to control this proliferation. May I, at this time, however, put in a plug for homeowner associations, and Dennis Zine will understand what I'm saying, since the city charter mandated neighborhood councils, it seems that suddenly the city has forgotten that homeowner associations exist, and just in a couple of weeks, the last two weeks, over 200 families renewed their membership in the Tarzana Property Owners Association. And I do request at this time that communiques be directed to homeowner associations, as well as neighborhood councils, who can move very, very slowly, under the rules of the city charters, and we can move very, very fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. San.
Good evening, Madam President, and members of the council. My name is Stephen San, on behalf of the Westwood Village Business Association. I want to thank you very much, and thank councilmember Smith for hosting this wonderful meeting of the council and the community. I will try to be brief and not repeat, I want to incorporate all of the thanks that Mr. Berg expressed, but I would be remiss if I didn't particularly thank councilmember Smith for your heroic leadership in standing up to some very fierce lobbying. We have no lobbyists on our payroll, we're just ordinary citizens, people in our communities who care and love this city. I want to also thank your staff member, John Lee, and the CLA staff, Lynn Ozawa and Ron Deaton, they have done heroic work. I just want to address one issue, because I know we have limited time. I understand there may be some consideration of a few little tweaks here and there, I think councilmember Smith did correctly describe the fact that we've tried to reach consensus, we negotiated tirelessly in good faith. We compromised on a lot of principles, hoping that the industry would come to the table and remove this just absurd threat of litigation, so we can finally clean up the sidewalks of our city. One issue that is going to be discussed tonight, I believe, is this issue of rack cards, and I just want to hold up one, so you know what we're talking about. This is what's called a rack card, it's basically like a little mini billboard, there's about 30,000 of these potentially put across the city in every color and design and all the rest. I think there's a proposal to not have rack cards, at least in specific plan areas. I would like to say, my community, Westwood Village, has a specific plan, so we're taken care of, but we, the Clean Coalition, are here for the entire city, including areas that are not so fortunate as having specific plans and streetscapes. I would mention in closing that cities such as Beverly Hills, Culver City, and Santa Monica, and many others, have recognized that putting these billboards, these little mini billboards on news racks, really is not, is not what we want to see for urban beautification, so I would just like to ask the council to consider, including the entire city of Los Angeles, in saying that we're going to have clean news racks without these billboards, and not just in the specific plan areas. So I want to thank you. And finally, I just have to say to councilmember Villarigosa, you were, whether you know it or not, kind of the inspiration for this Clean Coalition forming, when you attended that one meeting, and you listened, and I think responded to the concerns of Studio City, and those amazing visuals that were shown. So I want to thank you and all of the council members for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. San, and thank you for acknowledging that we've been joined by councilmember Villarigosa, who is also with us tonight from the 14th Council District. Mr. Handel, who will be followed by Don Schultz and Lori Hughes.
Yes, good evening, my name is Jay Handel, I'm the president of the West LA Chamber of Commerce, which encompasses CD 5 and CD 11. I come tonight again on behalf of our coalition, and I want to thank all of the players, I'm not going to get redundant and spend a lot of time doing it, but you guys have been great. This is urban blight at its very worst, and we're finally trying to rid ourselves of that urban blight. We have worked very hard, very tirelessly, for over six months to make this happen. And what happens in the last few weeks? 6,000 racks get dumped on our street. What is this about? This is about a very disingenuous group of publishers, who have come out and smacked 15 councilpeople in the face, and the entire community, right in the face, and said, oh, but we don't talk to each other, so we really didn't know. We believe the following, it's very clear, you know, there's no grandfathering, there's no more games, clean up our streets. We're taking our streets back, piece by piece, and the first piece is the news racks. We're going to clean up LA and make it a place to be proud to live in again. I ask you, the council, and I know there are friendly amendments coming through, the rack cards continue to blight us, they should be stopped. The numbers are there, we've limited the numbers. Now I ask you all, that if this group of publishers comes forward with a lawsuit, I ask you to put in as an amendment to your ordinance tonight, that if a lawsuit is filed, you will immediately stop the moratorium on the existing news rack ordinance, and aggressively enforce it, so that we will go forward and clean up our streets, with or without the help of the publishers, who have taken advantage of this city for 20 years, and who have now done such a disingenuous job of working with this community, that they have smacked us all. That is my request, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Don Schultz.
Welcome, excuse me, welcome to the valley, councilmembers. This is an ordinance that has been long overdue. Greg, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I know when I mentioned this to you six months ago, you were well into it, and Van Nuys is one of the hardest-hit areas with numerous news racks all over the place, no conformity at all as far as design, color, no removal of graffiti in any timely fashion. Please move ahead with what you suggested here this evening. We know you're being lobbied heavy by the other side on this. The other speaker said it more eloquently than I can. Don't fall into that pressure. Quality of life is an issue, it's a perception for a lot of people, in different communities, it's a different perception, but it's a reality in Van Nuys, that when we're looking at signs that stay on public property, news racks, pornographic literature that's in these sands, without permits, and they continue to be put up in a haphazard way, because there's just not enough of building and safety staff. If the city can find $500,000 for Maglev study, that we know isn't going to go anyplace, you can hire more building and safety inspectors to enforce this. Thank you.
Thank you. I did call Lori Hughes, so Lori, you can be the final speaker on this side.
Thank you. I would like to say that I represent the Airport Business District, gateway to LA, and I want to thank the council for looking at this issue, it's very important to us, and our primary concern is that there, in our district, we have over 144 racks, and of those 144, 111 are adult content. This ordinance will eliminate so many of those news racks, and it's just, it will clean up our blight, and we would appreciate you supporting that. And to Councilwoman Han, I know you need that in San Pedro as well, with your Promenade coming up, that's another beautiful area that they could put news racks on, and you need to be thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the other side for an additional 10 minutes, let me just read the cards, the rest of the cards that were submitted, and the names and the areas they represent for support. We have Rosemary Demonte from 66 PNC, Joel Fisher, Hollywood Unified North Council, Lorena Parker from the Studio City Improvement Association, Leron Gubler from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, Carrie Morrison, the Hollywood Entertainment District, Donnell DeDegan, the Max Factor Building in Hollywood, and Rafael Franco from the Studio City Improvement Association. Those were the other entities who were here to represent support for this, they will all be made a part of the official record. Let me now call on those who submitted either cards in opposition to the ordinance or for general comment. Let me start with, same, I'll call three at a time, please line up. Joe Wirlich, Jerry Marnian, and Sue Laris.
Start with you, if I may first?
Yeah, go.
Yep. Good evening. I'm sorely tempted to respond to some of the things that were just said unfairly, but I think I'll just continue with what I was going to say. My name is Sue Laris, I am founder, sole owner, editor, and publisher of Los Angeles Downtown News, a 32-year-old weekly newspaper, which I started with $1,400 on my kitchen table 32 years ago. Most of our readers work downtown, but they live in your communities, so what I've, what I'm about to talk about is not just a downtown problem. You may be surprised to learn that in large part, I am pleased that the news rack ordinance is likely to be adopted this evening. For 32 years, I've been following the verbal instructions of well-meaning city employees with regard to news racks, and for the last three of those years, I have been vilified for doing what those same well-meaning employees told me to do, as a result, Mr. Smith, of their best efforts to understand an almost incomprehensible existing messy news rack ordinance. It will be a relief to all of us, both the city employees and the publishers, if we get an enforceable ordinance to follow. However, I think that the law of unintended consequences is at work tonight. I think you rightly intend to regulate news racks. I do not think your intention is to cripple Downtown News, a specific newspaper among the large group of newspapers in the city. The ordinance, as it is written now, is a very large burden to all of the publishers in Los Angeles, and I'm talking about the responsible group of publishers. You have to understand that the newspaper coalition is not made up of all the people that you were talking about, you know, the porn newspapers are not part of this coalition, we have no control over that. But the ordinance, while it is a burden to all of the newspapers of this city, it is an extraordinary and completely unfair burden to Downtown News. I have surveyed our news racks, and the placement of somewhere between 75 and 95% of Downtown News news racks will be deemed illegal by the ordinance, and there will be no reasonable alternative for almost any of them. The extra burden that, for Downtown News, is a result of unfortunate coincidence between the distribution area, look, I know this is boring, but you listen to the other side, so I hope you guys listen to me, too. It's a, it's an overlap of the distribution area of Downtown News, as well as the intense concentration of historic and cultural buildings downtown. This is, when you think of, if you look at the news rack ordinance, and it talks about protecting the cultural and historic buildings of the city, you think of a list of treasured icons, which we could all support. But every page on this book, in this book, has four or five public buildings that, or public or historic buildings that are to be protected. There are 78 such buildings in downtown Los Angeles, and not only are we expected not to have our news racks in front of those buildings, we're expected not to have news racks on 20, 20 feet on either side of those buildings.
Sue, could I ask you to, like, sum up, we do have a limited period for a number of people to try to speak.
Yes, you have two ordinance, you have two amendments... Yes, you have two ordinance, you have two amendments that I have suggested and that the paperwork is being passed around up there, at least I hope it is, I handed it up there and I would appreciate it if you would consider those matters.
Thank you. Joe Wurlik will be followed by Jerry Marnian.
Yes, I'll be very short and brief. I'm with USA Today Newspapers. You all should have received a letter outlining our position yesterday afternoon and I think we passed one out today also. We have several concerns, although we do support a rack ordinance. The main concern that we have is a unified color. That effectively eliminates all of my blue and whites that all of our customers are used to purchasing newspapers out of. There will not be one of those in the city of LA, which means the customers will not be able to find our product. And that's basically all I have to say today. Thank you.
Mr. Marnian, followed by Deborah Gulak.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Marnian and I'm with the Los Angeles Times. I also like to acknowledge all the hard work that's gone into developing this ordinance. We've been part of the process since the beginning, including the last several months. But I think we entered this with open eyes. We knew that at some point we'd have a point of progress where we agreed to disagree just because some issues we might not be able to resolve. But moving forward, we think we have, for the most part, a pretty good ordinance. We, we do support a great majority of it. What you're going to hear as far as comments from us really doesn't pertain to the, the main issue of proliferation, which is what you've heard for the most part from most of the people from the other side, from Clean. Mostly what we're concerned about is some, some details that we think need to be refined and, and would like to see council instruct staff to continue working on those minor details. The issue with, with historical buildings is a particular concern of Los Angeles Times because apparently the LA Times building is listed in that, in that book as one of the issues. So it really is hard for us to imagine not having news racks in front of our own building. So we think a more reasonable and targeted approach to that would be, would be more beneficial to everybody involved. We do respect that there are some buildings in, in the city that should be protected, but there are others that, that may not be, fall into the same category. Also, there's, there's an issue regarding the SIs that I'd like to bring up. I've been around since the initial ordinance in 1981. Most of the work racks that deal with the initial ordinance, they are compliant with that in terms of SIs.
I think the initial ordinance was 1974.
I'm sorry, the one that was revised in 1981. And then, and actually that was the one that most of us referred to. That was revised and then, and that's what we're all brought, basing our comments off of tonight. But that, if we, there's just one little issue with the SIs I'd like to recommend a change and that is to lower the minimum requirement from 48 to 46. And the reason for that is most of the news racks that were compliant in 1981, because that was when the new restrictions came out, would not be compliant with this ordinance. And it's just a minor change and it would help a, a lot of the publishers in the event that they have to repaint racks, at least they don't have to replace them all. And also to raise it to 52 inches would also be consistent with that ordinance, with that, with those provisions. So that would be the minimum of 46 and a maximum of 40, or 52 inches as far as overall height. Finally, I want to emphasize that we also share in the community's concern as well as the city's concern regarding news racks. We want to make sure that, that the news racks are well maintained is one of the other issues that, that has come up tonight. We want to make sure and ensure that there's a permitting process in place so that the city can effectively regulate the placement of news racks. We agree with that. It all should, should be noted that in, there is going to be a loss of news racks, there's going to be a great reduction of news racks. The Los Angeles Times, who's been out here probably more than most people in terms of selling newspapers, is going to lose placement of news racks that they've held for decades and yet we expect, we accept that as part of our responsibility to the community and to the city. That's going to, translate into lost sales as well as lost revenues to the city in the form of lost sales tax revenues. So we, we would respectfully request that the council look at the issues that we bring forward tonight. Most of them, in fact, all of them but the one regarding the historical buildings has nothing to do with placement or dealing with the proliferation or reduction of news racks. Most of what we're talking about is, is issues that really don't impact that at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gulak, or Deb, Ms. Gulak.
That's okay.
Who will be followed by Victor Cervantes.
I'm Deborah Gulak, I'm with the Los Angeles Daily News and tonight I just want to speak on a, a very, very simple change that I wouldn't mind seeing to the proposed ordinance. One of the requirements of the permit application is that the publisher submit a drawing which includes all of the obstructions 50 feet to each side of a rack. However, the ordinance only has clearance restrictions of up to 20 feet. That's the greatest clearance restriction involved in the ordinance. So it seems a little, it seems excessive to ask us to go with another 30 feet beyond. I have had a conversation with Gary Harris of the Bureau of Street Services. He doesn't see any, any problems with lowering that, that restriction to, that requirement to 20 feet. I have brought with me a copy of, a sample of what the city of Burbank currently uses to diagram out their permit locations. I'll be more than happy to give this to the city clerk if you guys want to get copies of it. Unfortunately, I only brought one copy and that would be my only request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cervantes, followed by Norrell Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Victor Cervantes and I'm representing La Opinión, which our newspaper is a little bit different from the other papers. Our paper, as you probably already know because I mentioned this a numerous times, were 96% street sales, meaning that the reduction of the, of the racks will really impact up to 30% of our sales and the, you know, the publisher of La Opinión is very concerned about that. So I will ask you to revise that proposed ordinance because it really going to affect us as, as, as well as the Downtown News and the community newspapers such as the Coria Times. But we're very concerned about that, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. And since I called Norrell Nelson, you can come forward at this time.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, council members. My name is Norrell Nelson, I'm the Circulation Distribution Manager for the Los Angeles Daily News. I'm speaking to you this evening regarding two specific issues and while we generally support most of the proposed rack ordinance, being good corporate citizens and, and neighbors who live in the community, the two specific issues I wish to speak to are color and use of rack cards. No city remotely close to the size of Los Angeles bans the use of color on news racks or rack cards. Doing so will infringe upon newspapers' First Amendment rights, will cause us to lose a large percentage of sales and revenue, and will severely hurt our employees and independent contractors, all of whom live in the community and pay taxes. And with everyone so concerned in this day and age about budgets and city revenues, there will be a severe loss of revenue to the city. We're estimating that, and these sales don't go anywhere else, so you know, the thought that people are going to go from the vending machines to convenience stores or to grocery stores or home delivery subscribers, the fact of the matter is, is that that does not happen. And what we're forecasting is a loss of potential tax revenue to the city in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I urge the council members to please consider or reconsider these egregious proposals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, the time has expired on this side. Let me call those who've submitted, I just named them, they will be also named, put in the record. Mike Menza of the LA Weekly, Kurt Johnson of the Recycler Classifieds, John Parker, Canoka Park Improvement Association, General Comment, Paul, Raul Morales of the Positive Alternatives for Youth, and Jose Alvarez, just a youth group. So those will be made a part of the file. The public hearing is now closed. The council debate will begin. Council itself is also timed as we speak. We can't speak for more than three minutes on each item that we ask to speak on. Mr. Smith did want to provide some clarification. Then I believe we should hear from the city staff on what the proposal is before us and then begin the council discussion. And during that time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to be chaired by Councilmember Eric Garcetti, our Assistant Pro Tem, because I want to participate in the debate and have some motions to introduce.
Thank you very much. If we can hear from staff at this point, CLA and the city attorney? Is there anything you'd like to clarify while we're doing that, Mr. Smith, or do you want to wait till after they've spoken?
Yeah, very briefly, just a point of clarification, a couple of things that were said. First of all, in motion 1F to respond to one of the requests, there is a revision that was brought forth by staff that clarifies the one issue regarding height and that is moving it from 48 inches, 46 inches to 52 inches, which should conform with that issue. And so that's in 1F. As for Ms. Laris's concerns and the other gentleman that brought it forth, the concerns about the historical monuments, the ordinance only specifies five historical monuments. Those are, for the record, the Hollywood Walk of Fame, City Hall, El Pueblo, Disney Hall, and the Music Center. All those other historical ones would have to be brought to the Board of Public Works to be approved and added to the ordinance. And so those are, all those in that book are not precluded. And finally, as for, I'll, I'll save my other comments because they're personal comments, not clarification issues, so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If we can hear from the CLA first, please.
Thank you. I'm Lynn Ozawa from the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. What's before you this evening is the report of the Public Works Committee. The committee met on five separate occasions before coming to, to agree upon the recommendations that are before you tonight. Some of the major changes that are being recommended to you are, it includes a permitting scheme and fees, insurance requirements for news racks, impound procedure abandonment standards, a specific, a specific style and color and specific plan area streetscape plan. Modular news rack areas are included. A limitation on the number of permits for news racks is going to be limited to one per 200 feet of blockface and for every additional 50 feet of blockface after that, another four news racks may be permitted. There's a, going to be a limitation on permits, the number of permits total per 200 feet. The limitation will be 16 per 200 feet and for every additional 50 feet, another four can be authorized. The method of alloc, space allocation in areas where there are more permits than space allowed, the priority will be based on publication frequency and staff is working out the details of that and the Board of Public Works will be approving technical special provisions which will include the details. Maintenance standards are going to be included. The compliance period allowed will be 12 months except 36 months for compliance with the color requirements, plus up to two 12-month extension periods for proven financial hardship due to the color compliance requirement may be authorized by the Board of Public Works. So that would be a total of five years for compliance with color.
Ms. Cervantes, was that, was that on publications or was, did we settle, I thought we set a limit of a smaller publication, 65,000 circulation and below for that exemption?
I don't recall that, but if that was your intent, we can get that in the final version.
I think that was Ms. Carey's motion in committee that we, we look toward the small companies that had the real financial burden and give them that exemption, but not the large ones which really don't have the financial, while they have a large financial burden, they are able to, to meet that financial burden.
We can make that change in the final ordinance. There are several, no news rack areas because of their regional historic and cultural significance. Those areas include the Hollywood Walk of Fame, City Hall, El Pueblo, Disney Hall, the Music Center. And additional areas of regional municipal significance can be designated by the Board of Public Works and the City Council. There will be no grandfathering of existing news racks. Siting at the curb will be the only position allowed unless the Board of Public Works determines that it is not possible and then they will allow a limited number of sightings against the wall of buildings. There's a prohibition of citing news racks within 20 feet of both sides of public art. There is also a prohibition of not citing news racks within 20 feet of both sides of historic or cultural monuments. A prohibition is also in place.
Within specified.
Of not allowing news racks within four feet of legal outdoor and patio dining areas. And there are also some limitations on external lettering, including the masthead of the newspaper and rack card dimensions.
Thank you very much. If we can hear from the city attorney now, please.
Thank you. Christopher Westhoff, Assistant City Attorney, Public Works, General Counsel. When Mr. Villarigosa asked Lynn and I whether or not it was possible to take the city's current ordinance and instead of going with the Public Works draft, just amend what existed, it was very easy for me to do because I had had that draft in my computer for almost eight years prior to, to that request. I started working on redrafting this ordinance at the request of Ellen Stein, who was then President of the Board of Public Works back in 1995. There are not a lot of major differences between the city's existing ordinance and what you have before you. I think what, the two major factors that were missing from our ordinance, which impeded the ability of street use to enforce, were, one, a viable permitting system and sufficient forces on the street to do that. This ordinance takes care of both of those issues because we will be, one, having a, a very state-of-the-art permitting situation and that permitting situation and the enforcement that this council requests will be paid for by all of the news racks on the city streets. With that said, let me address some of the legal issues that have been raised here today. Let's start with color. I believe the gentleman from the Daily News was incorrect that there are no cities that actually have color restrictions as large as the city of Los Angeles, because since 1981, the city of Los Angeles has had such a restriction. Now, it would be hard to believe that, that the color of news racks in the city of Los Angeles was limited to wood-grained news racks. There are a few, but few, they're, they're very hard. They're almost, those may be deemed historical in nature eventually by the city. So the bottom line is, the city of Los Angeles has had for the last 23 years an ordinance on the books which said that the color of news rack shall be a uniform color. Obviously, that has not been enforced. But let me address the legal issue on that. I, I can tell you that I have, I have a file in, up in my office that is approximately a foot and a half thick. I have just about every case that has ever mentioned a news rack that has been published by any court of appeal or federal court over the last 30 years or so. There is not a single case which has struck down a municipal ordinance which required a uniform color of news racks. The, the key case is a federal case out of Coral Gables, Florida, where the court clearly established there that news racks had to be a uniform color. And in that particular instance, a, a particular publisher was claiming that they had branded their publication with the color purple and I believe the name of the publications was Exito. It was a Latino entertainment-type magazine. And they claimed that that is what, that was their, their absolute logo, they had to have it, they had to have the color and the court said no. In that case, the, the ordinance required beige to, to, to match the Mediterranean feel of Coral Gables, Florida, and the court said that was a substantial governmental interest in dealing with aesthetics and held that it was viable for the city to have a color restriction. I do not believe that courts will differentiate between municipal powers based on aesthetics merely because the city of Los Angeles is a large city versus Coral Gables, Florida. There are other court cases that have also mentioned the term color and have legitimately said that municipal government has a legitimate interest in aesthetics and limiting color is one way of controlling aesthetics. So I do not believe that this council is limited to allowing multiple colors other than what this council agrees to on the city streets, that no publication is entitled to brand itself with a particular color news rack. So you do have, in my mind, the right to, to place restrictions on color. I believe the issues on the historic core are legitimate and I think Councilmember Smith has addressed that, that they are limited to the five, and I think that may address the, the legitimate issues raised by the, the publications. I, I'm having a hard time wrestling with the issue that the dailies have raised about there being the substantial reduction in news racks. As this ordinance is before you today with the implementation that is at least in draft form, the daily publications will get a substantial benefit and, and preference over the rest of the publications on the city streets. There are a minimum of 16 potential locations for every 200 feet of, of blockface. There are not, I believe, on any single street, any blockface in the city of Los Angeles, 16 different daily newspapers to fill all of those 16 spots. There may be totally in the city that number, but they don't all compete throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. So I would be surprised if there is going to be any single blockface where a daily newspaper would potentially lose at least a single position. What they will lose is multiple positions on any blockface, which is a legitimate, but that doesn't mean that the public... that doesn't mean that the public will not have the opportunity to find their paper somewhere on a particular blockface. And it also doesn't mean that they will not have one across the street or kitty-corner from that. They could have one on all four corners if they put in and if those spots are available. So I don't believe it's going to impact the daily newspapers to the extent that it would appear from the testimony you've heard here tonight. There will definitely be a reduction in the, potentially in the monthly and bimonthly newspapers because they are the lowest priority. One issue that was raised at a meeting yesterday, which I think we will have to deal with, is the weeklies. I had initially broken it down for discussion into daily and non-daily. I think that we're going to need to address that, and we would be bringing back to this council the prioritization, because once the ordinance goes into effect, that's when the difficult time comes, it's going to be implementation time. And I don't think any of us feel comfortable not bringing that back to the city council so that you will address how we will prioritize how the racks will be put out on the street where there is more demand than legitimate spaces. And at this point, what we're looking at is maybe three tiers of prioritization: dailies, weeklies, and then everybody else. There will be a loss of, obviously, positions. Immediately, if you would eliminate multiple racks in a blockface, that will probably take care of some, but then the ones that will fall off will be the monthly and bimonthly type publications who are the lowest priority. By the way, that is a legitimate way of differentiating newspapers and publications is by days of publication. That has been validated by courts. It is now currently in place in the city of Pasadena. It is currently in place in the city of Glendale as a way of prioritizing how news rack spots are going to go on to, onto the different blockfaces. So with that, I believe I've addressed hopefully most of their legal issues that they've raised, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the city council has at this time.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Colleagues, we have five speakers right now, Ms. Mizakowski followed by Ms. Gruehl, Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Reyes. Ms. Mizakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. One, my thanks to everybody who's involved. As Mr. Westhoff said, he started to draft something in 95. I know when I was on Public Works Committee, that Mr. Smith now chairs, we had many, many meetings then, and so I'm really glad that Mr. Smith has brought something to fruition. Members, I have introduced five amendments, and let me be frank, these amendments come through the recommendation of the Clean Coalition, that is, the organizations of homeowners, neighborhood councils, specific plan areas, and groups who have had concerns. Everything that I have been presenting is and was part of a draft ordinance that came to committee and was changed in committee, but I don't think that there were serious objections to re-implacing them. One item was addressed earlier by Speaker 1A, and that is that news racks that have been placed on public right-of-way 90 days prior to the adoption of this ordinance must come into compliance 90 days after the ordinance. And members, what we're talking about here is we have the new newspaper that has been distributed, Spanish-language Oi, by the Chicago Tribune Group, and they did drop 6,000 news racks on our streets, and this organization has been part of this and knew that this ordinance was coming. So to do that, I think, is a direct affront to our process and policy, and those should not have any five-year waiting period. They should be out 90 days after the ordinance is adopted. Let them comply as well. Ordinance 1B adds back two areas, which were in an original draft, of areas where news racks we think should not be. One is the area on Brockston and Westwood. Councilman Weiss asked me to introduce that. That is in a specific plan area. It's also a promenade. It's not where cars are, it's just a walking path, and so I think that should be added, as well as the Venice Beach Oceanfront Walk. We don't need news racks on our beachfront. Three, the, 1C is the removal of the rack cards in the specific plan and streetscape plan areas. The council may want to debate the rack cards themselves, we heard it was discussed, but I think at least in our specific plans, those community groups that have come forward and created areas that they want to improve the general quality of life, we should acknowledge that. 1D is, I believe, that the current five-year compliance for color should be reduced in this, essentially, three years to come into compliance with two one-year extensions, which allows five years, or the extensions can be granted if there's a hardship. I think we should reduce that to a one-year to comply with the ordinance with two one-year extensions if you can show financial hardship. And I do believe that some of the daily, some of the local community papers are the ones that can most address that. I'm not sure that our big, major publications would have a hardship to change the color or compliance. 1E, the last one, is increases the distance back to what was first recommended of the district, distance of clusters of news racks from designated crosswalks and from bus stops. And that increases the distance back to what was recommended by the Bureau of Street Maintenance and Board of Public Works. And let me just say that these are all, Mr. Smith has signed them as chair of the committee. I believe they make sense. And for those who are saying that this news rack ordinance is going to cause a reduction in the number of news racks that we have out there today, we know by far that a great majority of the number of news racks that are out there today are illegal. So if we did nothing more than enforce the ordinance, a large number of these news racks would come down. The problem is without a proper permit, without permit specification on it, the city has no way of knowing as you look at the string of 26 news racks, which ones were there legitimately first, as you went in to take out 22 of the 26 that are supposed to be removed without having the spacing that's appropriate. So I look forward to a lot of the discussion that I think we're going to have around here tonight, but I wanted to get those motions made, they are seconded, and I hope we can act on them either individually or however the council will choose to.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Mizakowski. If there's no objection, those will be accepted as friendly amendments to what we have before us? Okay. Ms. Gruehl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Ms. Mizakowski, for those amendments, I think, which are extraordinarily useful as we move forward on this ordinance. I want to add my congratulations also to Mr. Smith. I was teasing him, this is the Mr. Smith week of saying thank you for both the issue on the DDBP rate increase and also on this item. So yes, a big round of applause, leadership. But I also want to take an opportunity to thank my community. Many of the leaders on the clean movement are from my district. And let me just tell you, we have a proliferation of news racks in my district, particularly in Studio City. In just a couple of blocks, we have 165, 165 news racks. I want to just, and I'm going to hand this out to my colleagues here and pass around, I have visuals from my community and business leaders here. Every color, shape, and size, every block, every corner, across the street, you name it, there are a number of these. And I understand the concerns raised, and I think we've talked about the legitimate concerns raised by some of the newspapers and weeklies and Sue, who's been a wonderful, you know, I think, advocate for downtown and what you're trying to do to deal exactly with your neighborhood. But, you want to pass them? Zoom in on that one? You want to be able to zoom in on my particular numbers here? But I will send this around to all of you. But I want to tell you, you know, we have a time where, you know, your sidewalk is broken in your neighborhood. You have to get a permit to fix your sidewalk, okay? If the tree is pulling up your sidewalk, you have to get a permit to fix that tree. Here, we're talking about where people are placing illegally news racks on our streets, and we have been unable to, for many reasons, to enforce that law, and what we want to do is bring back the integrity of our neighborhoods. Our bids, thank you. Our business improvement districts and others tax themselves to beautify their neighborhoods. And in Studio City alone, I know, just spent thousands of dollars to have a lovely median and to build, to put in trees in the area, and what has been taken away from that is the 165, and I'm going to keep calling that number, 165 news racks in that vicinity. And I have to tell you, you know, many of us, you drive down the street and you kind of get blind to some of these blights because you've seen them so often. And when this news rack ordinance was being proposed and my community came to me, I started looking at every street when I would drive down there and was shocked at how much of a visual impact it had and that so many of us had ignored its impact into our community. And I think that we have to, in the implementation, ensure that we enforce the law and the, I think, the issues that Ms. Mizakowski brought up relative to, you know, not taking five years to be able to change the color. And there, as Mr. Westhoff said, there are cities that have done this. This is not unique, and we can make a difference, we can improve the quality of life. I have offered, and my community has offered, for Ventura Boulevard to be the first pilot enforcement program, and I think hopefully that's included in this report because of its impact. So I just want to thank my community. We will be successful, we will do this together, and your leadership is critically important to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl. Our next speaker is Mr. Tom Labange.
Before I speak, two points. First, Russ Tavern is here from the city of Fresno. Please welcome him to Los Angeles. He came down from the Central Valley. We have a visitor from Fresno, so it's good to see you, Russ. And Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question if I have a conflict of interest. I was a newsboy when I was young. Is that, I just want to let you know, folks, we worked very hard on this. I was on the committee. I want to thank Mr. Sanhur from my staff for working on this, and Greg, certainly, Mr. Lee, your deputy, did an excellent job, as well as Jan Perry in trying to articulate this concern to your leadership. This has been a trying time for a lot of people in trying to get this organized, but you took the bull by the horns, if I could say that, and got us to this point, which is so important. I hope this does go forward. There's some things that need to be tweaked, not massaged. There's things that need to be corrected a little bit there. I want to thank Carrie Morrison and her daughter for their leadership out there, but I also want to thank the, thank you, Carrie. The publishing industry, I know you're not all happy about this, and I hope we could work and tweak out the issues there. The big thing, Sidney, that I don't like about your proposals is the elimination of the rack cards. If the rack cards talk about the events of the day, if they say, "When we won the Superbowl 20 years ago," we did, and it says, "Superbowl coverage" in the rack card, I didn't, I wanted to say something positive. I didn't want to talk about, let's say, what they do, when the Lakers won. Okay, I'm not a hoop guy, Greg, but when the Lakers won the world championship, they put a rack card in. And the rack card does provide some information, and I think that's something they should look at. And also, I think we have to be honest and address some of the issues. There's a freedom of press in this country, that people can publish content, and I know we don't like some of the content, and some of the content does have a, we would rather not have on the street corner, but they do have a right to be there if they're in compliance. And that's what hopefully this clears up.
Point of order, Tom, let me, my motion doesn't say the rack cards can't be there. My motion only says the rack cards ought not to be in the ones in specific plan areas where they've gone that extra mile to create some ordinances and rules.
Okay, but I would just say with that specific plan area, I think it should be, I would rather say it would be, all right, but I would say it'd rather be considered by the planning area, let them decide, because there's a certain, if this goes as Greg and I and Jan, and by the way, downtown was discussed heavily by Jan Perry to protect the interest of the need to have newsstands in the proper, appropriate places along what is a block by, full blocks of historic buildings, so to address that issue there. But at some specific plans, they may want this in the sense that if you, if you see this, I think it should be up to the specific plan areas to make, to opt out. I would think that would be a good discussion to have for them. And finally, Sidney, on the other issue there, I think there needs to be some, I would like to see it done overnight, and Wendy, it was our suggestion that we start in one of the, there are seven regions of the city as defined by Mayor Hahn through the council action, which is the North Valley, South Valley, West Los Angeles, Central Hollywood, East Side, South Side, and the Harbor, that we start in one area, South Valley first, with Ventura Boulevard, so that we could, we could have our Public Works inspectors and their team, which there's not enough of in the city, but to go block by block and get compliance so that you see progress being made. And that was the thought there, to start at one end of the valley. And you all know that the Ventura Boulevard starts in the fourth district and moves west through the second, fifth, and all the way out through the third district there. But finally, I just wanted to say on the time for compliance, I think there should be an opportunity, if we see progress being made in compliance, and if they're not making that date, Sidney, that they can apply to the Board of Public Works for a six-month or 12-month extension as seen fit if we see activity, because it is a tremendous investment that anyone makes on this issue here. And I hope, as we work together and come close, because this is going back to the city attorney's office, right? Mr. Westhoff, is that correct?
Correct.
For tweaking that we could all work out, make sure that we could come together in the end for the good of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Mr. Zine, to be followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Villarosa, and Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you. Councilmember Labange, our historian from City Council, I wanted to inform you that Ventura Boulevard starts at Valley Circle and runs east into Coinga Pass and down into Highland. So it starts in my district, the western boundary of the city of Los Angeles, at Valley Circle, and runs east into the other district.
John C. Fremont and General Mitchell Torino signed at Campo de Coinga the peace treaty between the California and Mexico that started the
Well, if you go to the sagebrush cantina, you'll understand where it starts. But I had some serious questions. Thank you. Tom is our historian, and anytime I can tell him that history's out in the valley and not only in other parts of the city. Anyway, a question for Chris.
Sure.
We have dailies, we have weeklies, we have specials, and the photos show they're advertising cars and houses and technology, et cetera. The enforcement, you send out a notice, do they tag it? Building in Safety, Street Services, is the posse going to go out there and clean it up? If one of those does not comply, who's going to go out there and take care of it? Who's going to act? What are the provisions if there's non-compliance?
It will be in the Bureau of Street Services, and street use inspection will be the area. The intent is to have a fee attached to the yearly permit which would cover the enforcement cost. Now, obviously, it's, the real expense is going to be in the first few years trying to get everybody into compliance. Once we get them into compliance, the fee can be reduced. And what this can't be is a revenue generator. It has to be merely a fee to cover the cost of enforcement. And then essentially, Street Services will be bringing to the council what they believe is the appropriate budget and the number of people to implement the ordinance. And you're right, it will be tagged, we will give them due process. But what we foresee is, in essence, a bar reader, a barcode on each news rack. And when they shoot that barcode, it will give them all the information about the publisher and where that news rack was supposed to be, and it will be infinitely easier for them to tell whether that's a legal rack or an illegal rack, and based on that, they will take whatever action is appropriate. We have, we worked out some of the details, but we have to tag, we have to give them an opportunity to fix it themselves. And if it's not permitted, it can be confiscated at that point.
Well, that's my question. Will there be confiscation of that rack?
Yes.
And it'll be a serious enforcement effort, not just send a letter, put a
Oh, no, no. The intent of this is to get illegal racks off the street. That's why we will have the barcode so that the inspectors can read them and tell whether or not it's a legitimate rack or not. Right now, there is absolutely no way for an inspector to go out and look at 17 racks in a row and decide which three are legal and where the space should be. There's just, there's absolutely, it's impossible.
Right.
And that's why we need to, in essence, reseed all of the blocks where there is more demand than there is available space.
Well, I know that the major papers, the major metropolitan papers, the representatives are here from The Times, The Daily News, USA Today, The Downtown News, legitimate operations. We have some operations that we question the ownership, and the question of that is, the legitimate folks will comply, and it's just like Bandit tow trucks and Bandit taxi cabs, those that don't want to comply will have some very serious confiscation to get rid of them, because, like you say, if there's no compliance and there's no enforcement, as we know now, we don't have anything.
Correct.
Except a mess.
The intent is to have street use inspectors on the street every day checking news racks. Now, how many there are will ultimately be up to the city council and Street Services to work out the budget and work out how much it will raise through the permitting fee for each of the news racks to ultimately determine. But again, once the city has been reseeded, once the, what we have termed high-density blockfaces are put in compliance, it'll be easy then, because they can literally go out and in five seconds with what we expect to be the state-of-the-art, be able to read the barcode and be able to tell whether or not a rack is legal or not. If the rack is in the wrong spot, or if the rack is not permitted at all, that rack will come off the street.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment also to thank everyone for their hard work in being able to reach this threshold and hopefully implement a program that's going to benefit the whole city. But one question I had for City Attorney Westhoff, there's a process that we're going through in identifying safe passages. We have, as far as District 1 goes, very dense areas. We have schools being built close to each other, especially in the western portion of the Harbor Freeway, and we have other high schools being built in the southern part of the district right around Westlake. These are also enclaves of very diverse communities. We have Chinatown, we have strong enclaves of Vietnamese, Filipino. And my concern here is that, there's two issues. One is that, how do we offer that level of relief for those communities whose only means of communication of that language is whose only means of communication of that language is that paper? Is that a matter that was discussed in the process?
Yes, and if the -- again, if the paper is a daily paper, regardless of what language it's printed in, it will have the same priority. And if all of the dailies will go into a pot, and in essence, we will draw a lottery, and they will get to pick their spots based on the lottery. If they're a weekly, they will get the next priority. If they're more -- if they're below a weekly, there is a chance that they might not get the place where they want to be, but they'll get an opportunity to be either across the street or around the corner, hopefully. I mean, again, there's going to be a reduction in racks, and it's going to be based on the days of publication, because we cannot base it on content. Content -- we have to be content neutral in whatever ordinance we adopt. So I can't just say, for instance, all adult material goes off the street. They're entitled to the same First Amendment rights as The Los Angeles Times, New York Times, Daily Journal, et cetera.
Okay, now, on that point, this whole notion of harmful matter, we're looking at the whole relationship of safe passages. We have kids who will be walking through certain routes more routinely than others. Would it be possible to look at those corridors as a place in which perhaps the adult material could -- We're not eliminating them, we're just not putting them in the eyes of the young children who are going to school back and forth, they're waiting at a certain bus stop. There are certain corridors that the children migrate with when they're getting to school and back. Is the safe passage notion something we could address?
Well, you run smack dab in the First Amendment when we talk about harmful material.
I know. I read your report.
Right, let me -- you've seen -- for all the council members, so that you're aware, I prepared a seven-page report for the Public Works Committee that is dated July 21, 2003, and it really goes through a number of issues. In the adult-oriented material, we have a number of issues from the legal side of it. First of all, there is a state penal code section right now called 313.1, which would allow the Los Angeles Police Department to enforce and remove from the street any harmful material, as it's defined under that code, from any news rack. Now, any -- because we have been preempted, because there's a state law, we cannot have a local law that is in conflict with that state law because of the concept of preemption. That doesn't mean that, for instance, you could not put blinders on adult racks in certain instances. There's a case cited in my report that discusses blinders, where harmful matter, and, you know, has been blinded by cities, and the courts have upheld that as a valid means of doing it. Removing them from the corridors becomes a bit trickier. And to be honest with you, at this point, I would not be prepared to opine whether or not that would be feasible or not. My best guess is that would be a very difficult thing to demonstrate and to define in terms of the areas. The blinders is something that we could certainly look into to shield that material from, you know, from the young people's eyes. But to remove them from the street, we would be raising a serious, you know, First Amendment issue.
Well, it just seems to me that in other cities, they have been a little bit more aggressive in how they deal with the level of harmful matter that's attainable or viewable for children. And what I'm suggesting to you is that, and I'll put this in a formal motion later, but to look at the notion of safe passages for kids, where the young children, the grammar school age, elementary school, don't have to be facing this as they're walking to school. We're not eliminating them. We are giving them their right to sell and have their presents, and we're not violating the First Amendment. We're just moving them out of harm's way, so that the harmful matter isn't in the eyes of the children. And I just want to put that forward, and I think we should test it. I think we should be aggressive and take that on, because I think it's worthwhile. Our kids get -- I mean, they get beaten all the time with this kind of material, especially in the corridors where the kids have no choice. We have really, in the older parts of the city, we have very narrow sidewalks. So it's not much they can walk through. So this is an issue that's very important to me, and I'm going to push forward on that whole notion, understanding that we're not violating First Amendment rights. But I think it's worth testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Vera Gosa, to be followed by Mr. Ludlow, Ms. Gruel, and Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Vera Gosa.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Chairman Smith and the members of the committee. It's actually, in my mind, rather embarrassing that the city of Los Angeles has been grappling with this issue since 1982 and revised in 1991. And we wrote -- did some work on this in 1995, and I think that's why people are so frustrated with municipal government. And so it says a lot about the leadership of Mr. Smith and the members of the committee. I sat on that committee for about two meetings, I believe. It was a wild two meetings. And I can tell you, it didn't seem like rocket science to me. You look at the pictures that have been passed around, I really would encourage you to do that. And you see blight, defined any way you want to define it. You see an urban blight that neighborhoods shouldn't accept, and under this proposal, as amended, and I support the amendments, will not be accepted in the city of Los Angeles. You know, part of the reason why I asked for this grid back then, if you remember, we were talking Greek and Latin and every other language in between, and I took a little Latin, and -- but I couldn't decipher what was being argued at the time. And when you look at this grid, you see much of what we have today, the proposed revisions, actually fill in the blanks. You know, we had an ordinance before, but we never defined it. We define it now. We never had a permitting scheme. We have that now. We didn't have insurance, impound procedure, abandonment standards. We now have included that. We had a standard style, it was implied at the time. Now, you know, we make it clearer, the same with the color. The list goes on and on. I thought your point, Mr. Westhoff, was a good one. We've actually, since 1982 or whenever, we've actually had a color in the city of Los Angeles. We just didn't enforce it. And so it seems to me, when you look through this, notwithstanding some of the concerns that have been raised, and I know I am also very concerned about the point that was made regarding historical edifices, but we just heard from the chairman that, in point of fact, there are only five or six specifically spelled out. If more are included, they have to come to the Board of Public Works to include them. So I support this proposal. I, again, acknowledge the leadership of Mr. Smith. You're very lucky, all of you, to have this man here, because I can tell you, back then, when we were sitting on that committee, I knew it was going to take a lot of effort and a lot of leadership to marshal this through, and you've done that, Greg, and I congratulate you and the committee for doing it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vera Gosa. Our next speaker is Mr. Martin Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. And I want to try something. Councilmember Gruel did something exciting. And I want to hold the photo, one of the photos up that Councilmember Gruel brought in for two reasons. I just want to see if the cameras can actually pan in on that. Can they see the glare? Let me try that right there.
That's good.
Take it out. All right, ITA, we're giving you your best shot here. Can you do that? Not me. The photo, can you get it?
Yeah, looks good.
All right, there we go. There we go. Now, can you -- I'm holding that up for two reasons. And again, let's thank Councilmember Gruel for bringing in the photos. But it's important for two reasons. One is, the public needs to have a real face in terms of what we're talking about here, because in many communities, in many neighborhoods, you may not have these. And for some folks, as Councilmember Vera Gosa said, this might sound like Greek. But also, I'm also somewhat appalled that in certain communities, we don't know what this looks like, because certain newspapers have basically not advertised in our neighborhoods at all. We don't have access to some of these newspapers, even in our stores. And so I, for one, don't want to go down that route here tonight, although we could have a whole nother session on where news is available to certain parts of the city. But I do want to thank Councilmember Smith, again, for his leadership on this issue, and also the Chair of Public Safety, Cindy Misakowski. And I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Westhoff and go back to Councilmember Reyes's questions. Do we have anything in this ordinance, and I was digging through this, and I wasn't -- I couldn't find it, in terms of adult magazines that are in certain proximity to schools, as we have controlled adult entertainment businesses in their distance to schools?
No, there is not anything in this particular ordinance, again, because of the potential conflict with Penal Code Section 313.1. The state law is pretty clear that you cannot display harmful matter anywhere in the state of California. And that is one that would be enforced through the Los Angeles Police Department. Again, in my report, I cite to an ordinance where the city did have a -- an ordinance. The existence of the state ordinance regulation may preempt the city from taking broad legislative action in an area addressed by state law in Carl versus City of Los Angeles, which is a 1976 case. A portion of the city's news rack ordinance dealing with the sale of harmful matter has already been held to be overbroad and struck down by the court. Of course, because the court found the statute was overbroad, the court did not reach the issue of a conflict with the state penal code. So we have -- we not only have the whole issue of overbroad, you have the issue of an existing state penal code section, which governs this. That does not prevent you, for instance, from using blinders. That is one that has been approved in another case by the Court of Appeal.
Well, what I -- and what I'll do is, I agree with Councilmember Reyes, and I understand the issue of reaching into another, into the jurisdiction of the state and which one has sort of the first of a right of refusal, so to speak. But I do think that we, as a city, and perhaps Chair of Public Safety, might be willing to indulge with a couple of us on researching this issue, because I hear a couple technicalities in there that we might want to explore, similar to how we're trying to address the issue of adult entertainment in proximity to schools, not display, but actual proximity. So that's a question. And then, I guess the other question is, I know we haven't talked much about the enforcement level in here, but just could you give me a quick snapshot of the fee issue or the penalty issue that this ordinance may end up covering?
Well, I think we have Street Services here. I'll be honest with you. I have not delved very deeply into how much it is going to cost to enforce the ordinance, because quite honestly, I'm not sure we have a handle yet on how much the technology is going to cost and how many inspectors Street Use believes that they're going to need in order to enforce this ordinance throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. The cost on a per-rack basis, news rack basis, is going to obviously depend on the number of news racks and the total cost of that budget. There may, and depending on how much the council wants, it's going to have to balance the burden on the news rack and publishing industry versus how much enforcement they want to have on the street at any given time. And, you know, Street Use can, and Street Services can address that better in terms of how many inspectors they need, they think they're going to need, and how much each inspector will cost on a yearly basis. Again, once the city is reseeded, once we have taken care of all of those block faces where there is more demand than there is available legal space, the enforcement problem becomes much easier, because they will all be permitted at that point. There will only be at legal racks, and then the inspector just goes in and essentially shoots each of the barcodes and is able to tell whether or not we have a legal rack or not. So it'll be much easier and probably less expensive down the road than it will be in the initial thrust. So whether the council wants to subsidize that enforcement initially, so that the burden isn't borne by the industry, that is a policy decision for you. If you want to spread it over the industry, you have absolutely the legal right to do that. The only right -- the only thing you can't do is raise revenue from whatever you charge for the enforcement or the yearly renewal fee on their permits.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I just, if I could get 60 seconds to wrap up, I appreciate it. The -- and again, in addition to our appreciation for having Councilmember Smith's leadership on this issue, colleagues, we've got a real jewel in Mr. Westhoff. Your preparation and knowledge of this issue is just phenomenal. And I really appreciate it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I want to concur with what Councilmember Vera Gosa indicated. For me, colleagues, this is a real issue of blight. It's also an issue of safety. And clearly, as you can see from some of the photos that Councilmember Gruel brought in, for people who need additional access issues along many of these sidewalks, this is a real offense to people who are in wheelchairs and people who have difficulty traversing some of the sidewalks in the streets. And I think that we do the city great justice. And I know one thing for sure. Here in a room with elected officials, taking on the media, is an interesting moment. I'm sure many of us are going to suffer the consequence of voting against the LA Times and voting against the LA Weekly. We are concerned, though, about the small weeklies. And one thing that I can say to everybody in general who are concerned about the costs here is, print the news that is interesting to the public, and I think you'll do fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. Our next speaker is Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're right. Actually, my father always told me, "Never argue with someone who buys ink by the barrel." So now that's obsolete, since they don't do it that way anymore. And, you know, I really do want to thank everyone who has worked on this. We've actually solved some pretty interesting issues in this city since I've been on the City Council, through Citizens Task Force, together with the industry representatives, and which is how I think the ordinances that are the best actually come to being is when you have buy-in from everyone who's a stakeholder in what it is we're trying to do. And our constant challenge is, of course, getting that balance between preserving quality of life, while certainly not impeding people's right to have a business and to sell their business. I just have two questions, and maybe you can help me understand that. One is, I am concerned about the newspapers, particularly La Peñon, who states that they have 96% of their sales on the street. And what, are we going to look at this, you know, after a year, when the ordinance is in place? And if, in fact, we can, they can prove that they've, you know, their sales have dropped substantially, that in fact, it's hurting their businesses? Is there some way we can relook at that? The other thing I was wondering, was there any consideration by the task force to maybe look at placement on sort of weighting their, the lottery, on whether or not you're able to have home subscriptions versus the majority of your sales actually are dependent on the street? And didn't know how you want to address that. I certainly don't want to see a newspaper like that, you know, lose sales.
And I can tell you right now, and I recognize that La Peñon is, has a somewhat unique situation relative to their sales. But again, I, there is nothing in this ordinance that is going -- again, there are no, there are going to be a minimum of 16 news racks on a 250, is it 200? 200-foot, 200-foot block face. There's going to be four more if there's 50 more feet, which goes up to now 16, and then four more up to 20 if it's 300 feet. Most of our blocks are at least 300 feet long. So you've got the potential of having 20 spots. They are going to have the same priority as the LA Times, Daily News, Daily Journal, New York Times, Wall Street Journal. So they will get pulled out of the hat like a -- there are -- In my mind, I do not see the dailies losing the ability to have at least one rack on any block face in the city of Los Angeles. I just don't see that happening.
But in fact, if that does happen, is there some sort of --
There is no, there's nothing, and again, what they're, the way it's penned now, and I can't guarantee it will be penned, but we'll bring it back to you. If they're not on this block face, for instance, if on the north side of Ventura Boulevard, let's pick it, if they need to, they would then, if they lost in the lottery, there were, you know, 20, 16 dailies, and there were only 12 spots. The four dailies that did not get that first spot have the first pick at the next spot. They can pick it across the street, catty corner. So they will get a location right within 200 feet of the block face that they selected. That is the way it is written currently. So the dailies get a lot of preference, and the dailies get a, an opportunity to pick the next available spot. So they will not be shut out. And again, I would be shocked if there is a block face where a daily newspaper does not get a single location. The only thing they will not be able to do is piggyback multiple locations on the same block face. That's something that this council has been very clear about, clearing up. So The Times will not have three racks on First Street between, you know, Broadway and Main. They will have one rack, you know, and that's, and every newspaper will be limited to that.
Okay, thank you. The other thing was, number 11, was no news The other thing was, number 11, was no news rack shall be placed in any area zoned residential, with apartments areas being excluded from that. Was there any consideration given to residential areas that actually like having the racks there? I know where I live, there's, there's racks in our residential area, and many people kind of make that daily walk up a couple blocks in our neighborhood and buy their newspaper that way. Was there any thought given to homeowners groups or, or neighborhood councils actually, again, maybe opting out for a particular neighborhood?
Well, our current ordinance bans the placement of news racks in residential neighborhoods. So I don't believe, what I, what I assume is that there's probably a commercial block that they're walking to that might be where they're placing them, but where there are single-family residences, it, news racks are banned, and I would be surprised if, if any particular.
Actually, this is a townhouse.
Townhouse. That, that may not qualify, that's a multifamily residential, and so you may, it falls outside of the prohibition. So that's why you have them there. So multifamily residential, they are allowed, but not single-family residential.
The other thing, one more, one last thing is, we got communication from USA Today, who has been involved in the process all along and has felt like this is a really workable ordinance, but sort of asked for one more month, had a few more amendments they would like to offer. Is it your opinion that, at this point, we would all probably agree to disagree, or do you think there's any merit in, you know, giving them a little more time to come back with some things that make it even more workable?
Well, I don't see any substance, substance in the letter, and I got a chance to read the letter. I find it, you know, mind-boggling that, you know, that it got here today at, you know, whatever time it got here, when we have sat across from the, and, and the coalition, Clean Coalition has sat across from them for months at a time. And I can tell you, the Times certainly had their lawyer in the discussions from the very beginning. He's been involved for, for at least the last six or seven years, so I'm not sure. The one issue that, that is paramount to the, to the USA Today is the one issue that this council, you know, is not going to let go of, and that is the uniformity of color. That is an issue which they believe they are branded in that blue color, and, and they may very well be, but the law is pretty clear that you have a substantial governmental interest in controlling the aesthetics on the street, so.
Okay, thank you. Good job, everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Next speaker is Ms. Grul for a second time, then Ms. Misakowski to follow. Ms. Grul.
Thank you, and I just, I just wanted to add that we showed you some of those pictures from the neighborhood and, in Studio City, and many of those were put in, some of them recently, in the dead of night, where they knew, and I, that's why I so appreciate the amendment that Ms. Misakowski made, because for me, this is really simply out of control in the neighborhoods. And we all believe very strongly in a First Amendment right and the ability for small business owners to survive. That's not what we're talking about today, we're talking about quality of life in those neighborhoods. And I just also wanted to add, relative to what Mr. Reyes mentioned and Mr. Ludlow mentioned, about some of the adult magazines, and again, First Amendment rights, we believe in strongly, but I had a constituent who came to a meeting and brought one of the newspapers, where her child had gotten it out of free, there had been no blockage, and had brought it home. And it was in an area that, it was not necessarily near a school, but near the area, as Mr. Reyes mentioned, where they were walking home, or in front of a arcade, or whatever it may be in a location. And we obviously have rules and laws relative to the adult entertainment that we're looking at and some of the problems that Ms. Perry and I have had in our district relative to the 500-foot rule, and to look at that as well. So I just think you've heard enough from people today to see if there are any ways in which we can protect people's First Amendment rights, and at the same time, ensure that kids do not get access to this kind of material.
Yeah, and, and again, Councilwoman, the, the issue, unfortunately, there is a difference between the entertainment business, which is not necessarily a First Amendment issue as much as the print media. I can tell you that they don't publish on a weekly or daily basis, so they will be receiving the lowest priority, and so if any racks fall off, it's going to be potentially their racks. Again, the, the one thing that this council can do is require blinders on adult-oriented material, and I think that's something that, that you can look at. I think you need to hear from the city attorneys office Criminal Division to see about how Penal Code Section 313.1 can more effectively be used to mitigate that problem, because I do certainly understand it and sympathize with it, but we've already lost part of our news rack ordinance in the, in the 70s because of an overbroad definition. Penal Code Section 313.1 has been validated by the courts and is enforceable by the Los Angeles Police Department, and I know my office would be very interested in prosecuting anybody who is, who is violating that particular code section, but I would need to bring in our, the criminal branch to, to assist you in dealing with that issue.
Okay, and again, a special thank you to you, Chris, for all of your work on this.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Our next speaker is Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Let me just reaffirm what Mr. Reyes asked for and Mr. Ludlow asked for, and Mr. Westhoff has indicated, that as, as Chair of Public Safety, I'm happy to work with the Chair of Public Works, Mr. Smith, to look at that issue on addressing whether or not blinders should be on the harmful material, whether we can work with the city attorney on the Penal Code section to where and how far we can go in a specific definition. I would ask, and I think Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ludlow would agree, that we not try to incorporate that into this ordinance, because let's, let's let this ordinance go through, let's create a parallel ordinance, so that if there is a more, another challenge to that other ordinance, it doesn't lose this one. I think Mr. Reyes, do you have, is that a point, Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to add that perhaps if it is a state jurisdictional issue, we can find a state sponsor that can work with us on a bill that would allow us to coordinate. I don't want to complicate this particular ordinance, but again, we have to think outside the proverbial box here, but if we can get a state official that can help us coordinate, put the specific bill in place that would help us achieve our goals.
If the state bill could help enhance what we can do, but I think we've heard from our city attorney that we have the authority right now to put blinders on it at least, and perhaps take some other steps, so I'm happy to do that. I just wanted to reinforce, for those who've been concerned about the local community papers, which mostly are weekly or monthly, that they will get a special priority section in a second category, so that the locals themselves, which I think, you know, whether it's the Toluca Lake Times or the small, the Toluca, there are, there are a lot of local community papers that we want to make sure have their priority. That's not part of this ordinance, that's part of something that's going to be brought back at a later time, so I just want to make sure that we're separating that, but giving acknowledgement and due to those local papers that are viable in a certain community, whether they're in a different language or whatever. So again, I think we've, this is important to act on this today, to get to the city to work these out, to take the next steps, because it's been going on for too long, and Mr. Smith, as has been said, just deserves heroic credit for finally bringing it to fruition so we can get to this point and start putting something in place and changing the streetscape and landscape of our city, which we've heard about for far too long and have not been able to do anything. So I'm really looking forward to this, and I understand that Mr. Garcetti would like to give back the chairmanship to me so that I can call on him, and then we'll call on Mr. Smith to close. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski, and thank you, colleagues. It's been great to listen. I will be brief, because I think most of the points have been covered. This has been quite a week here in Los Angeles, and there's two reasons why I'm especially proud to be in Angelino tonight. When we looked at the DWP rate increase earlier this week, just yesterday, what you had was work from a lot of different communities that came together, here, led by some folks in neighborhood council here in North Ridge, came together with communities like ones that I represent, Silver Lake, the West Side, the Harbor, coming together to actually talk about an issue and raise that issue and come out with a solution, led again by Mr. Smith, so you all should be very proud of your representative out here, of a solution that gives us the basic facts, and really builds on community outreach. And here tonight, I think we're all here, and we have such uniformity of consensus here among the council, because the same thing happened. I'm very proud of folks like Kerry Morrison, Lauren Gubler in Hollywood, who are an important part of the Clean Coalition, who came together with people from all over the city. And these are basic quality of life issues. I know Mr. Carden has introduced a motion this week about streetlights and communities that don't have streetlights. We have to begin every single day as council members, and each of you have to begin every single day as residents of your communities, looking at the streets, looking at the sidewalks, looking at the trees, those basic services and necessities which give us an idea about the quality of life. We have seen other cities that we drive through that are more beautiful than Los Angeles, and there are so many different ways in which we try to bring that beauty back. We have projects to try to underground power lines which run through our community. We look at these news racks that are everywhere, and we're trying to get some uniformity there and reduce the number of them. We try to do street beautification efforts, each one of us, medians, plantings, and the community always comes out for that. But tonight, we stand together as one city, and I want to thank everybody who's been part of this, because I stand with you tonight as well. Two quick questions. One, which I know we have for geographical local papers that Ms. Misakowski mentioned, this builds on what Mr. Reyes is saying, is the same thing where there's geographic slash ethnic overlap. If, if the Koreatown Times or something has a certain amount of spaces that they win as lottery, will those then be able to, will they get primacy in areas like Koreatown where it would be most relevant?
Well, the intent is to literally do this block face by block face, because it's the only way that it works. We're not going to allow them to mass mail in their permit requests. We're literally going to, it's going to be a, you know, block-by-block war in terms of trying to get this thing accomplished. So we will do a block face and move to the next block face and just literally go around. And again, this will not be every block face in the city of Los Angeles, it will only be those block faces where there is more demand than there are legal spaces. I would assume that the Koreatown Times is going to want to have its numbers in the lotteries when we do, in, in the area where they, they would sell the most newspapers. It still only means that they will only be able to get a single rack per block face. Now, if they are a daily, which is, we've defined now as five days or more of publication, they would be at the highest priority. If they're a weekly, they would get the next priority, and then they, if they are less than once a week, then they will fall into the lowest priority. I, it's, it's clear to say that those in the lowest priority, there are going to be a bunch of them that, that are not going to get first, second, or third choice. They may have to be a couple of blocks away from where they want to be, and unfortunately, we are not going to be able to differentiate based on content. So I can't give a monthly that is an ethnic newspaper any more priority than we would give to the infamous yank that we have heard about for the last number of years proliferating on the streets. So we can't do it on content, the only, we have to use neutral content measures, which is why publication, days of publication, is an acceptable way to differentiate in, in the different classes of publications.
If they cite themselves as a local paper, the same geography essentially that's used, would that cover it?
No, we're not, we're not giving any geographic, it's just categorical, it's not geographic.
Got it.
But, but again, in Koreatown, there will probably be a different set of daily players than there would be in East Los Angeles, or the Central City, or out in, in North Ridge versus, you know, even, even Ventura Boulevard. We expect to see a slightly, we, for instance, some of the dailies, like the Long Beach Press Telegram, is probably going to be in San Pedro. They're going to probably want spots, but I doubt if they're going to want spots out in, out in the valley. The San Gabriel Tribune may want spots along the east side of Los Angeles, but they're probably not going to go into West LA. So there'll be a different mix of competitors, but all, all of the dailies will be in one pot, all of the weeklies will be in another, at least as it's set now, and then everyone else falls into the, the third category.
Great. Lastly, it's not, not so much a question, but I would be interested in doing whatever we need to, to strengthen some of the prosecutions of, when there is adult material that is winding up in kids' hands. I understand the First Amendment, but it's kind of like, people have the freedom to drink, but if you suddenly put it in racks out there so that kids could actually just go and grab it, I think there would be an outcry. It's the same thing, and, and listening to students at Hollywood High School who have talked about walking home, girls who talk about sometimes being sexually harassed on the streets, and they walk by these things in the streets where people are, are actually have turned the pages open. It seems to be there's been very little enforcement, that's on all of us, but I would be interested in seeing prosecution there and the blinders as well.
Well, I will, I will take that message back to the city attorney. I know he is incredibly interested in, in, in the children of our communities and the schools of our communities, he's expressed that on numerous occasions, and I will bring that message back to our criminal branch and have them start marshaling the Los Angeles Police Department for some discussions on how we can more effectively enforce 313.1.
Great, and, and last sentence, I know that the first area we're looking at is the valley, and I grew up, spent the first 17 years of my life on Woodley Avenue, so I'm very supportive of that, but I know Hollywood was a strong part of the coalition, and I'd love to see them move, perhaps simultaneously with that as well, or second, make sure that we get in there as well. I think that, it's a real jewel of the city, it's the number one tourist destination in America, and when people come and they see that in Hollywood, it makes us all ashamed for that to be our calling card, so love to insert that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I believe we now will call on Councilmember Smith to close.
Thank you, Madam President, and first of all, I want to thank my colleagues for giving me a lot of credit that really is not all mine. Certainly, this process began with Board of Public Works, who reported to the committee prior to my being on the committee, and that's under Jan Perry. And Jan Perry and her committee at the time very succinctly stated the message that the report that was given to them was just unacceptable. It did not solve the ills of Los Angeles, in fact, if anything, it kept them alive and kept them a problem. And so I commend Ms. Perry, who is not here tonight unfortunately, for her work and, and really getting the process started. I want to also commend the citizens in the back of the room and a few of the front of the room here, who really drove this agenda home. Throughout the city, we had people come to us through the Clean Coalition, who brought together all kinds of groups and organizations, who brought the message very clear, that we want a clean and, and city that we can all be proud of. That's all we ever wanted. And I think what the committee did is they listened very clearly, they brought them to the table, and this is probably the first ordinance that has ever really been written in, in a council office with the neighborhood and the newspaper industry in this case sitting at the same table. And I commend both of them for their hard work over seven months with my staff, in particular Mr. Lee, who worked many days, many nights, met with the community to hear those concerns and try and codify them. What we did is we took the old ordinance, we strengthened it, and we said it's time to start enforcing it. And that's what the committee did, and that's what your committee did, and you should be very proud of them. We brought forward abatement rules, it says you cannot just leave a news rack out there if you don't take care of it. We want you to go out and fix it, if it's got graffiti on it, if it's broken, if it's a detriment to the community in any way, we want you out there in 24 to 48 hours to clean it up, take care of it. It's your property, take care of it. And the news media industry did come forward and say, we're not going to do that, but we'll also clean up around the news rack as well. So I commend them on that. On the issue of standard color, I said very clearly in committee, I don't understand the argument, quite frankly, and I know we talk a lot in the council about my going to USC, but I also went to UCLA, and while I was at UCLA, I got a certificate, I didn't, I, I admit it now under oath. I did get a certificate, thank you, thank you, couldn't graduate. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Vera Gosa. Everything you have in committee just died. While there, I got a certificate in advertising and, and marketing, and I hear the news media industry say to us that it's very important that their color is something they need to protect. I think your logo is something you need to protect. People know your logo, they know that Times banner, they know the daily news colors, they know what your paper looks like. I can't tell you probably anybody in this room that knows what color your news rack is specifically, that, that is your color, that is privately owned by you. And I think that is a mistake on your part to make us try and think that. As far as the request from USA Today, we said in committee two months ago that we want to bring this ordinance forward, and the news media asked us for 30 days. We gave you 60. I don't know why we need to give you any more. This has been discussed for years. We've come to this point. With your participation and with the neighborhood's participation, I think we're just time to make a decision. That's what I'm asking the council to do today, that is what your committee has done today. I think we have brought you a credible ordinance, thanks to Mr. Westhoff, it is a legally defensible ordinance, and it's an ordinance that will make us all proud of our communities, and with that, your committee asked for your support, and again, I thank the members of the council for their accolades, but I really need to give them to John Lee as much as anybody in my staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And let me just indicate that per Mr. Labange's request, the amendment that I had on the specific plan, news cards or news, the rack cards, can be amended as in the new ordinance to include where the specific plan areas indicate that they want them off or banned. So that will, will make that verbal amendment. Madam Clerk, I believe we have the ordinance and the committee reports before us in one, two, and three, with the amendments, which were all considered friendly amendments and incorporated into the committee report, so would you please call the roll?
And, Madam President, that was requesting the city attorney to draft an ordinance, so the ordinances will be coming back before council. Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Vera Gosa, Zine.
10 ayes.
That matter is approved, and we will send it forth with. Thank you to all who participated. Members, we still have four items that were called for discussion and many, many cards in public comments, so let's go quickly through the rest of the items on the agenda. Mr. Labange.
President, for Mr. Smith, the chairman of the committee, please.
Yes, I also want to give great thanks to Lynn Ozawa from the Yes, I also want to give great thanks to Lynn Ozawa from the city Legislative Analyst Office, who worked extraordinarily hours in drafting this language. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Madam President, this item before us, could I ask the clerk read it, please?
Item four?
Yes.
Item number four is a Public Works Committee record, excuse me, report relative to street sweeping and storm drain maintenance practices, and it's initiated by motion Labange Perry.
And this was to improve our ability to keep streets clean and the storm drains clean, in an effort to make sure that we don't have flooding in neighborhoods. This took place, and we did have a report, and I see our Director of Street Services was here. Mr. Robertson is right here. Bill, if you could come to the mic just for a moment, please. We have over 7,000 miles of streets in the city of Los Angeles. Not all of them are swept by motor sweepers, but in high densely populated areas, in commercial districts, they're swept. And at this point here, Mr. Robertson's going to give a brief little report on this here as we try to attack the problem of trash and debris in our public ways.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. Good evening, councilmembers. Bill Robertson, Bureau of Street Services. As Councilmember Labange stated, we have worked very hard on the issue of street cleaning, how we, along with our sister bureaus, specifically the Bureau of Sanitation, who is responsible for stormwater issues, how we can work together to keep our streets clean and make sure that the debris that are in the street are taken care of and removed before they hit the storm drains. One of the issues that we have addressed is working with the neighborhood councils, partnering with them to identify the needs as far as cleaning goes. As Councilmember Labange mentioned, we have many streets that are on regular sweeping once a week. The majority of the streets in the city are swept on a monthly basis, and it's those streets that we want to identify, working with the neighborhood councils, that we can better clean with their assistance, rather than going out and posting signs that some communities feel are intrusive to their communities. But working with them, we've been able to identify certain days of the week, give them a specific time that the sweeper will arrive, and they have been very gracious in working with us and moving their vehicles to allow us to be much more effective in our street cleaning efforts. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Good. Well, members, I think we're going to get more report from this. The other thing we want to tie into is that fast food establishments, wherever they are in the city of Los Angeles, they have extra dispensers on the sidewalks, so people who may choose to eat at these establishments have a place to discard their trash as opposed to throwing them on the sidewalk or in the gutter. I know you're working on that issue, as well as working with the MTA on bus stops throughout the city and making sure they're maintained, and also develop a formula of how many bins are needed in the area. So this will be an important report that will come forth, and I just ask for everyone's support on this, which I hope and know will get a unanimous support.
All right. Is anyone else wishing to speak? If not, then we have the report before us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Zine.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. And members, there, as I said, we still have three items that were called special, and we've got about 30 cards in public comment. I would like to, I know that a couple of councilmembers have just gotten up to stretch their legs a little bit and greet some of the people who are leaving, but we are down to now just 10 members in a quorum. I'd please like to have everyone check in and make sure that if they have to leave, they let us know so we can adjust the schedule accordingly. Next item?
Item number five was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you say what's before us at this time for everyone?
Item number five is a Public Works Committee report relative to the city's anti-littering law and fine, and that's initiated by motion Labange, Gruel, Perry.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, did you know that the city of Los Angeles has a fine if you litter? Did you know it's $1,000? And you know when how many people got fined last year in the city of Los Angeles? There's the man right there. He wins the prize, the Laughlin. Zero, zero people got fined for this. So I thought it'd be appropriate to work with our Public Works Department to lower the fines so that we could have enforcement, not only by our police officers, but also by our Public Works inspectors, by anyone. And then remember the old movies where you see the shopkeepers take care of their sidewalks, clean up their sidewalks, clean up their gutters? Well, we're going to return that, because the inspectors are going to walk down the business districts, and they're going to continue their community outreach and relationship. But at the same time, if that shopkeeper is not taking care of their sidewalk, or not taking care of their curb and gutter, they will get a citation. This is all to relieve the trash and debris, because about 85% of all trash that the sweepers of Los Angeles pick up is within one foot of the gutter. And we want to have a tough enforcement on this, so we all keep Los Angeles beautiful throughout the city, from San Pedro to Chatsworth and from Boyle Heights to Venice. So members, I ask for your support on this. We're going to get various reports in the coming months to come back with this, and the goal is to keep trash out of the street, out of the gutter, out of the drains, out of the river, and out of the ocean, because eventually it all drains from the great west valley of Dennis Signs, where the Bell and Calabasas Creek come together near Cogu Park High School, and runs 51 miles of the Los Angeles River Basin. So members, I ask for an eye vote on this, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine.
Leonis Adobe, the number one historical monument in the city of Los Angeles, Valley Circle and Ventura Boulevard, for the historians. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms...
No, I have more. I have more. I don't want to become a historian like Tom Labange. No, my question regarding enforcement, you said no one was fined. How many citations or how much enforcement was actually done in the city of Los Angeles?
Other than illegal dumping, where, and I know your fine councilman, Greg Smith, is also a reserve officer and did, was involved with several arrests of people illegally dumping off vehicles, not, just talking about litter. People throw trash, they either throw trash, there has to be enforcement on that, Dennis.
No, I'm asking, you said there were zero fines. Was there any enforcement, to your knowledge?
Well, I don't think it's enforced at all.
Okay.
And I talked to our chief of police, Chief Bratton, earlier when I discussed this. He liked the idea. Our Public Works people like it greatly, and community leadership in my district likes it greatly, because they want to see people respect our lands, our public lands and our sidewalks.
No, I agree that enforcement has to take place. The concern I had is if there's no fines and there's no enforcement.
No, there will be a fine, Dennis. It'll be lowered to $50.
No, I understand that, but there's a fine of $1,000. That is scheduled to be lowered, and hopefully that will encourage people to do enforcement.
Correct.
And the question I had was, how much enforcement was there under the current fine? How do we motivate those enforcement personnel to do enforcement on that, to make it an issue? Street Services, Bill Robertson, he's doing a jog up to the microphone, to have people actually do enforcement, because it does create a problem. And Tom Labange and I were at the LA River one day, and we saw, during the rainy day, and we saw the styrofoam.
It was the first time I took him there.
Yeah, we took a walk down there and all the styrofoam. So, I mean, it's an issue that we have to address. My concern is, no one's getting fined, no enforcement, we got a problem. If we lower the fine, what kind of enforcement can we expect from your department personnel?
I think it's very key. I think we've already demonstrated in the illegal dumping problem, which is a much larger problem. Our department alone has made 159 arrests. We've impounded one vehicle already, thanks to the council's passing of that ordinance. I think the key in the past has been that over the years, everyone has taken the view, softly I might add, unfortunately, is that $1,000 is a lot of money for someone to pay for dropping a piece of paper. And I think that there was not the will to go ahead and enforce that type of penalty. I think with, working with Mr. Labange's office, we've identified a number of cities, West Hollywood specifically, who creates a great deal of revenue by issuing these smaller fines. It's been very successful for them, and they're getting a much, much greater compliance. So I think the key is that the street use inspectors we have out in the field every day, we will now make that one of their priorities, to enforce this new litter ordinance, and to make people aware of their responsibilities in maintaining their property and the public right of way adjacent to their property.
And then a question on enforcement. The storekeeper will be responsible for the property in front of their stores, not the, if we see an individual obviously throw something on the ground, that's a violation, but we're going to hold the storekeepers responsible for people who discard in front of their premises?
Again, this is going to be a, it's going to be the enforcement officer's call. Obviously, if it's a form of illegal dumping, then yes, we may not cite him. However, if it's a known store where children stop and buy candy on the way home from school, and they go out and they litter out in front of that store, because that property owner does not have a trash receptacle or does not maintain the location, then we will cite them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Mr. Ludlow.
Could we have you come back up? Where'd you go? Bill?
Bill, Mr. Robertson.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Somebody was littering. Did, in your, in the numbers that you all put together, do you know where we stand in the other cities in the county? And you may have just said that, and I didn't catch that, in terms of the fine level?
I think most municipalities have the longstanding $1,000 fine. Those other cities, I think, were basically in the same situation we were. They weren't enforcing it. West Hollywood was probably the ones out front thinking outside the box and realized that by lowering the fine, they would get a better enforcement from their people, and then they would get the community to buy in. And I think the key with this amendment is working with the neighborhood councils, the bids, and all the communities throughout the city that we serve, and letting them know what their responsibilities are and that we are there to help them to maintain their property. And this gives us the teeth to deal with those individuals that just don't care.
And on this motion, would we, so we would change this permanently? We wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking at piloting this and looking at the effects of lowering the number to increase the enforcement? We would be making a permanent change in this respect?
That's correct.
I guess, I guess we could come back at any time and ask to review it in a year and see if LA is cleaner. You know, I mean, I guess logically it holds that you'd reduce the level and maybe we'd be more willing to enforce it. I wonder about the public impact in terms of the image and people's concern about actually suffering such a high fine. And that's the obvious flip side of it, but I, just as I wrap up, because I think in general, anything that we can do, if the two departments are joining together, you think this is a good way to go, and you think it's going to improve the street cleanliness, colleagues, I hope we'd be willing to come back and maybe have Street Services come back in a year and give us some kind of a rating, and I don't know how we do that.
We'd be glad to do that. We will be tracking all the notices and the fines that may be paid. And I should mention that, again, it's a graduated-type fine for the first, as the person gets his first citation, he pays a certain amount. It goes up if we have to cite him the second time. If we have to cite him the third time, the fourth time, it becomes a criminal misdemeanor.
Right, and I understand, and I guess, again, for me, it's a quality of life issue, it's a cleanliness issue. The proof will be in how we look, how our neighborhoods look and how our streets look. Is LA getting cleaner or not? And that, to me, is really where it would be, and if we come back in a year and look at it, maybe Neighborhood Councils would be the place to ask the question or public surveys. Colleagues, as I support this, I just, again, I know it's been a long evening, I just wanted to say one thing. I really wanted to thank Councilmember Greg Smith again for tonight. I know the room has emptied out, but the public should know this is probably the biggest turnout that we've had in any of these night council sessions, and we should just thank everybody in Council District 12 one more time. This place was packed tonight, packed tonight, packed tonight. And all the viewers out in the city, there are some guys working back in a hot, hot, hot closet back here, making sure, all the ITA guys have done a great job bringing this council session live to you tonight. And we want to thank you guys for all of your work back there, and Greg's thanking you as well. Supporting this motion, encouraging eye vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, did you have a question?
Yes, in terms of, there was a time when we had the kind of campaigns where, one that comes to my mind is "Give a Who Don't Pollute." It was automatic, just registered in your mind. Hey, wow, that's what it is. But bottom line is, I know you work with one bureau, we have Power Water and Power dealing with water issues, the Ali River issues, the, all the dumping that goes in our sewers. Have we thought about a campaign within the school district where we can teach our children, and perhaps those children can teach their parents about, you know, littering and the things that happen in our streets? I mean, it's a very populated city, it's getting dense every day. Have we looked at some kind of a campaign where we can talk about stop littering?
Yes, Councilmember Reyes, you're absolutely correct, and I know that the Bureau of Sanitation does a great deal of work in their stormwater protection program and working with the neighborhoods. And our own bureau has had some, a number of successes in recent years where we partnered with individual elementary schools, middle schools, we worked with them, we made them honorary street use inspectors to get them out in the neighborhood and identify those types of things. We are currently working on reinstituting that program to get them re-involved as part of this anti-littering campaign that we will be moving forward with.
We should work on a jingle, we should work on a mascot, we should have it everywhere so folks will know it's not appropriate to litter our streets anymore, and we just can't afford it. So maybe that's another motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And speaking of jingles and motions, let me call on Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you. I won't be singing tonight. But I do want to make, Mr. Reyes, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to make the motion that actually the fines that we collect will be steered directly towards that education program. I've seen that at Logan Elementary School. I think it's a great way of guaranteeing the money that we come in is tied directly to reducing the litter as well. And I was joking, maybe we could also have one of the penalties be that anybody who litters listens to a short, abridged history of Los Angeles from Tom Labange for about maybe two hours or so, and they'll become better citizens as a result.
That's cool.
Mr. Labange, did you have something to add?
Well, I just wanted to close on that. I just think this is a great opportunity, and I, and Ms. Han just mentioned about the great Iron Eyes Cody, who lived in the 4th District on Griffith Park Boulevard, that great Native American who had that famous poster of his tear in his eye when he saw America ravaged by litter. And if we think about it, it's really simple. Keep America beautiful, keep our communities clean, and everybody does their part, and even at our schools, to encourage the whole team of people to make sure that you get in the habit of finding a trash can, put it in your pocket, don't litter, because it will make a difference, and it will greatly improve the quality of everybody's life, because when people see that a street's dumped on, then they dump on the neighborhood. And if we want to fight for our neighborhoods, we've got to make sure we keep it clean and make sure we work with our Public Works Department, work with the Police Department, and the whole element of city government and the council offices to make our districts very nice. And this city is a city of great neighborhoods, and to keep them great, we have to make sure they keep clean. So I thank all the colleagues on this, and there's more that we could do all the time to keep America beautiful and keep Los Angeles beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Zine.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item is item six, called special by Mr. Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, because time is running along here tonight, I ask Karen Koka here from the Bureau of Sanitation to give a brief report on our efforts in recycling as it deals with other agencies in the city of LA, that'd be in the state of California, federal government, LA Unified School District, as we endeavor to meet our AB 939 goals, as well as a requirement that was passed by the Landfill Oversight Committee of the mayor, which wanted to expand our efforts in recycling. So if you could just give a brief overview of what you've done, what you've identified, in particular, what those other government agencies are doing to help us meet those needs?
Yes, certainly, Madam President, members of the council. Karen Koka from the Bureau of Sanitation, glad to still be here for my five minutes. I'm sure this is a punishment because I missed Public Works Committee last week. In December, a motion was adopted that directed the Bureau of Sanitation to look at what other governmental agencies are doing as far as recycling, when they're located in the city of Los Angeles. We don't have a lot of jurisdiction over what they do yet. They contribute over 6% of the waste that's disposed by the entire city. We did a survey back in the year 2000 and found that there really wasn't enough going on in the state, federal, and county agencies for recycling. on in the state, federal, and county agencies for recycling. LAUSD, however, has done a very good job and continues to maintain at least a 50% diversion rate at this time, although we continue to reach out to schools and add them to our curbside program as they show interest, and we're working with them. Basically, the recommendations that we came back with, with the council, because of the findings and, and finding out that, in fact, that county, the county of Los Angeles has a recycling coordinator, but that they don't do a lot of monitoring of what they do. We prepared a map that shows that, and it doesn't include federal leased facilities, only county and state facilities, and then the three large federal buildings that are owned in the city. There's over 200 locations within the city, and yet, most of them are not monitored for recycling. State agencies have moved far ahead of other governmental agencies because they are required by AB 75 to actually adopt and implement recycling programs. So, the recommendations that are before you include, basically, I'm assigning a member of my staff to spend time to map out all of the county, state, and federal facilities that are owned or leased in the city. We're going to survey them to see what they're doing right now, and we're going to work with elected and appointed officials and then the heads of those agencies to make sure that whatever options that, or directives that have been implemented over time are, are going to be implemented within the city to help reduce the amount of waste going into our local landfills that are generated by these facilities. Did you want me to read the recommendations, or is that?
We have it in front of us.
All right.
Thank you for that.
If, if you have any questions.
Uh, Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What struck me, you just made a comment that, it's a little alarming, but I just want to get clarity on that. You mentioned that there are no regulations at these recycling centers? Is that, was that, did I hear you correctly?
No, that the city of Los Angeles does not have jurisdiction over other, other agencies that reside within our borders. They are governed by their own rules. For example, State of California adopted regulations that require all state agencies to recycle and report on it.
I see.
The county passed a motion in 1990 that says if it's economically feasible, you should recycle. And they have a white paper program, but they don't have any additional programs. So it depends on what agency we're talking about.
Now, the presence of these recycling centers, is that in any way can it be alluded that this is what reinforces the, the sub-economy of, let's say, the homeless, the folks who bring recyclable goods, the concentration of that population base? Could these symbols also reinforce the presence of, of that type of activity in terms of these recycling centers? Are we talking about the greater, larger-scale centers where the, the folks who are desperate and trying to find ways to, to get by on sustenance?
I, I believe in, in this case, what you're probably referring to is recycling centers where people actually redeem the materials.
Right.
What we have mapped out here are all of the state, federal, and county offices that are located in the city of Los Angeles.
So that's another map?
That's another matter, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Grul?
Mr. Reyes, that I recently had a public safety meeting in my district, and we had problems with three specific recycling centers that had become problem areas and were close to residential. People were loitering. It became a haven for, for many, many problems. And I know that Building and Safety, I saw some initial draft of some of the proposals that they're coming forward with to address the, the problems with some of those recycling centers in certain neighborhoods. So I share some of your concerns and, and hope that that will be coming forward fairly soon. I think David Keim shared with me some of those items in the past on the Building and Safety side.
Great.
All right, we have that consideration of the motion before us with some instructions to Public Works to report back. Open the roll.
Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, LeBonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Zine. Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. And the final item that was called for special discussion today is item seven. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski. Colleagues, we all have before us a chart here. And thanks to all of your leadership, we became the largest city in America to require that our buildings be built, our public facilities, like fire stations and police stations be built to what's an environmental standard called LEED, which essentially looks at everything from solar power to green building. I know for many residents out here, Sunshine Canyon and landfills are a concern. When you look at the amount of waste that we have, even when we're doing our best job with glass and, and our bottles and our cans and our paper, about 40% of the waste minimum, and in some places it's much higher, it comes from building construction, and comes from the fact that we don't recycle our building materials, the fact that we often don't think about doing our, our construction in environmentally sensitive way. It's interesting, because the original pueblo of Los Angeles, when you go downtown and you see that it's off-center, it doesn't go directly north and south and east and west, it's because buildings were offset by the original planners of the city to take advantage of the natural sunlight, to be able to have northwest, sorry, northeast to southwest, northwest to southeast direction for all the buildings to take advantage of, of nature. And sometimes we've gotten away from those routes. This motion tonight looks at whether or not we can identify certain buildings which we can meet what's called a silver standard of LEED construction. And I think it's critical, too, as we talked to DWP about a rate increase for water, that we look at what efforts we're doing as a city to ensure water conservation occurs. We can save money. We can help keep rates lower by making sure that we build buildings that don't waste water, that have the best plants in front of them, and, and other things that meet these LEED standards. And I think it's critical for us in this context, both of trying to figure out what we're going to do with our landfills, as well as looking at our water rates, to make sure that we push forward. The Bureau of Engineering, however, needs some help. And I know in past years, we've had a couple dedicated staff members who have looked just at the enforcement and the, the attempts at trying to get a LEED standard. But I think that DWP, and we've had some good conversations with them in the past, paid for, but Bureau of Engineering was able to supervise, so there's accountability. Environmental engineers who would oversee the green building program to make sure that we not only reach silver, but maybe even gold and as high as we can. It saves us all money as taxpayers. It makes good sense for our environment, and it takes a lot of the trash out of our landfills that we have from building construction materials. And so I do hope that DWP will help be a part of that solution. I think that's the kind of smart green power policies that we need to see out of our Department of Water and Power. I want to thank Councilmember Smith. He's, he co-introduced this with me as, as a seconder. And I know that he is, as Chair of, of Public Works, been making sure that we keep an eagle eye on this as well, because it really has relevance, not just for where these buildings are built, but throughout this basin and making sure we can reduce and recycle. So thank you very much, Mr. Smith, for that as well, and I ask for your support tonight.
Mr. Smith?
Just briefly, I believe Deborah Weintraub is here from the department. If you would want to make a very brief presentation on, on the chart here so people understand it, and secondly, what we can do in the additional buildings that we have coming online, such as the West Valley Police Station, maybe, which will be built in the next couple of years, or any of our future fire stations that we still have online planned. So if you could dress up very briefly, please.
Okay. My name is Deborah Weintraub. I work for the Bureau of Engineering. I am the city architect. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm thrilled to be here. Even at this late hour, I could talk eloquently and at length about green building, but I will spare you the details. The chart that you have in front of you is, reflects the mandate that you gave us to make city projects minimally LEED certified. And it lists all the projects that the Bureau of Engineering is currently working on. And as you read it, you'll see the total number of points possible listed at the top. Certified, you need between 26 and 32 points. It lists all the various categories, and just briefly for members of the public who may be unfamiliar with some of the elements of green building. It addresses issues such as site selection, stormwater management, water-efficient landscaping, energy efficiency, the integration of renewable energy sources on buildings, using materials with high recycle content, increasing the amount of construction waste that's diverted from landfill, using local and regional materials, and materials made from rapidly renewable sources, improving indoor air quality. This has health benefits in terms of minimizing chemical content in building materials that is potentially harmful to people's health, increasing thermal comfort, and daylighting into spaces, and then any innovation that can come with thinking about buildings in a systematic, system, system-like way, holistic way. The chart shows you all the projects, and if you turn to the back of the second page, you'll see that the total number of points each of the projects are targeting. And just below that, you'll see the status of the project. So BNA stands for Bidden Awards. Some are at 50% CD. That stands for 50% construction documents. In terms of the question that council had for me and for the Bureau of Engineering, which is which projects could potentially go for a higher level of LEED rating, it has, it has been shown across the country, and this is a national standard, that projects, larger projects, have a lower incremental cost increase going for higher ratings. And I brought with me a chart just briefly for your information. These are fairly conservative estimates of what incremental cost increases are, there are for, first cost increases for construction dollars for building projects. And this is just construction dollars. What this chart doesn't show are the significant operating cost savings, so that you see paybacks. It's a lifecycle analysis, so that you see paybacks. If you increase your first construction cost by three to 7% for a 35,000-square-foot building, you may have paid for those first cost increases within five to seven years. And then, the duration of time that the building is in use, which in the city can easily be 50 years, we're seeing cost savings, energy cost savings, as well as improved interior environments. For larger buildings, like half a million-square-foot building, to go for certified, the, the first cost increase becomes smaller. And for silver, the same is true. It's slightly higher than for LEED certified. I've given you very conservative numbers here. There are some studies being done at the state level right now that indicate the cost could be even lower. So I, in terms of projects that could go for LEED silver, it should be larger projects. I know here in, in Council District 12, we have the new Valley Station at 8341 Canoga Avenue, which is about to start design development. It's been through schematics. The Bureau of Engineering would like to do an analysis of what the incremental cost increases would be to make that project LEED silver. We're far enough into it where we could get very specific, specific in numbers and come back to the council in, in a month's time to report on that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think I still have a little time, so very quick. I want to thank you, first of all, for that presentation. I, what really the impetus of Mr. Garcetti in my motion was to see that the city does everything we can to not just be certified, but to the rise to the next level, and to utilize our resources in a more mindful way. And so I appreciate that information. And what's not included, actually, in those hard costs, those dollar costs, is the social cost, which cannot be quantified by dollars. And that is the saving of landfill space and the saving that, that we get out of not decimating our communities. So I think those are important issues. I'm glad you brought that forward. And I hope that the council will support me in asking that, that fire, that police station that's going to be built in West Valley, that you go forward with that analysis and bring it back to Mr. Garcetti's committee in mind. We'd like to see that, I think. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Weintraub. Members, we have this matter now before us. Madam Chair, please call the roll.
Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, LeBonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Zine. Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. Members, we are now at the time for a public comment. And although I have a number of cards, I believe a number of them were people here to speak on the soccer issue and the Little League matter that we took up right away. But I'm going to call people. I'd like you to come forward to the microphone to speak. I think we're going to ask for a 90-second limit so we can get as many of these tonight. All right, let me call and see how we go in moving this along. Becky Bendixson, Mary Edwards, Mary Ellen Crosby.
You know, Greg, I can't say anything in 90 seconds. Good evening, Madam Chair, President, and City Council members. My name is Becky Bendixson. I'm the chairperson of the Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council, certified by the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners on September 10, the 2002, and a duly-elected board as of March 31, 2003. Those dates are relevant to my testimony here this evening. I appear before you to represent the approximately 28,600 residents encompassed within our boundaries, the LA City-City Line, the I-5, Golden State Freeway, the 405 Freeway, the 118 Ronald Reagan Freeway, and the Liso Canyon to the west. The city charter provides under Section 907 as follows, quote, "Early warning system. The regulations shall establish procedures for receiving input from neighborhood councils prior to decisions by the city council, city council committees, boards, and commissions. The procedures shall include, but need not be limited to, notice to neighborhood councils as soon as practical, and a reasonable opportunity to provide input before decisions are made. Notices to be provided include matters to be considered by the city council, city council committees, city boards, or commissions." On October 2, 2003, our neighborhood council was first advised of the proposed DWP Halliport project to be built within our neighborhood council boundaries via fax from Councilmember Greg Smith's office, sending a determination letter dated July 14, 2003, from the Chief Zoning Administrator, Robert Genovese, stating the project was approved, and we are advised that Councilmember Smith had requested the DWP now work with GHNNC. The record indicates that the only recipients for notice of this project were the DWP, the LAPD, the Arklands, owners of the nearby Green Waste Facility and Vertical Aeronautics International. I ask you why planning and zoning are allowed to circumvent the city charter, requiring notice be given to the affected neighborhood councils. Many of you are aware that our community is very active in protecting its residents, and GHNNC has taken positions on numerous projects. Of course, we wish to be part of the early process for this Halliport project. At the last citywide Alliance of Neighborhood Council meetings, I requested a breakout group to assemble to discuss this very situation, spoke with Dunn General Manager Greg Nelson, Bond Commissioner Bill Christopher, and others. And from that discussion, I came away believing that if a public hearing is not scheduled, the city is not required to give notice to neighborhood councils of these projects. And hence, we are not afforded the opportunity for early comment on such important items as the EIR to protect the wetlands, habitat, Canadian geese, flora fauna. GHNNC has subsequently been trying to address our concerns with the DWP for this project. The removal of the DWP facility at the Van Nuys Airport will reduce aircraft sounds there, but apparently we're told that they are not considered to be an impact on our residents. I'll skip part of it and move ahead. I learned that another project is apparently forthcoming within our G boundaries by happenstance while attending a meeting of the Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council on March 11. LAPD is apparently planning to build a bomb squad facility at the site of the driving range and firing ranges in our vicinity of, of, again, the proposed DWP Halliport. I'd ask you to address this problem by forming a grievance working group, perhaps under the auspices of the Education and Neighborhoods Committee. All these issues need to be addressed by all the neighborhood councils who are being left out of the process. Whenever a project is conceived and headed for planning, zoning, or any city department, let us in on the process in the beginning. We should not have to learn of projects from our council member. He has enough to do. We should be treated as the separate entities that we are. The charter was changed, presumably to let the valley be more inclusive in the process and give us our fair share of good as well as bad things. We're disappointed with the process. That does not allow us the opportunity to provide input before decisions are made. Having the soon-to-be the nation's largest landfill, and now the mayor wants to eliminate the Environmental Affairs Department, again, one leaves us wondering, who's listening to us and protecting our well-being? Traffic is unbearable on our resident-
Ms. Bendix, I have given you twice as much time.
I'm sorry, but I'm representing 28,600 people.
How, can you complete your comments?
Okay. You, I think you have the message. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Edwards, who will be followed by Mary Ellen Crosby and Joe Vitti.
I was going to give a lot of accolades to Greg, but unfortunately, the time doesn't permit that, Greg. Sorry about that. But we know that you're working hard. I think that you, as a council, have inherited a really sad situation, because so many people are, I guess they're just disenchanted with the system, thinking, when I ask them, oh, well, it's already the done deal. The lobbyists have been there. Everybody has been. But tonight, I'm seeing a real breath of fresh air. I'm really proud of the things you've done with the news rack ordinance, and the LEEDs requirements are terribly important. I know in this district, we're working with the fast food industry. One of the Wendy's wants to build a, a project up here, and they're working cooperatively to have things that are recyclable. And also, we directed them to the LEEDs requirements. It would be really good if you could give to the neighborhood councils some LEEDs requirements for buildings that go in their district, where they can work with the developer on establishing these requirements. I think this would be an excellent suggestion. Of course, next week, I'm not as dramatic, unfortunately, as Iron Eyes Cody, but I- Of course, next week, I'm not as dramatic unfortunately as Iron Eyes Cody, but I will be weeping over the trees, the 900 and some oak trees that are going to come down at Sunshine Canyon, because the permits probably be issued next week, and I will shed tears over that. But one of the unfortunate parts is that we don't know how really to enforce the mitigations, and we need to know that the Q conditions and those things are going to be met. And sometimes, when you write to planning, it is kind of a deep void, but I do feel that also, we need inspectors to really monitor and follow up on all these things, the billboard ordinances, the other things, you know, without enforcement, there, it's, you've had many things on the books that haven't been enforced. We need to work together to do these things, and need to work with neighborhood councils. I know I've expired my time, but there's a lot of really important issues. Oh, the oak tree ordinance, could we go down from eight inches in diameter, maybe down to something like two? That would really help, because the little trees are coming out without mitigation.
Mr. Smith indicates there's a revision of the oak tree ordinance in committee, so he'll contact you, and you can have that early warning to talk about it. Ms. Crosby?
I'm Mary Ellen Crosby, and I'm chairman of the Friends of O'Melveney Park. And most people don't know what O'Melveney Park is or where it is. It's in Granada Hills, and it's two miles north of the 118 freeway off of Balboa, and that's the reason I'm here today. It's a gorgeous park. It's, you were talking this evening about preserving natural spaces, greenlands, our park is a natural park. Once you enter the parking lot, you're like in another world. It's mountains, and hills, and trees, and coyotes, and snakes, and mountain lions, it's wonderful. But our problem is, people can't get to it anymore. We'd love to have the whole city enjoy it, but if you come up Balboa in a normal time, which is two miles, it takes you approximately five to 10 minutes to get to the park. But from 2:30 to 7:30 every day, it takes 30 minutes to travel that same distance, and it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. And why it is that, it's because the people in Canyon Country and that area are coming home from work. And there's a builder who wants to build 5,000 homes in an area called Los Lomas, which is at the end of Balboa, which is less than a half a mile from my park. And if we can't get to the park now, what's going to happen when we have 5,000 more homes trying to go up Balboa, which is the only way you're going to be able to get to Los Lomas, and it's the only way we can get to ours? So please come visit my park, but don't come after 2:30 any day. We'd love to have you, because it's a gorgeous park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Joe Vitti, then Bill Williams, and Brett Richardson, who will be followed by Jeff Tobias.
Good evening, and thanks for coming to the San Fernando Valley. My name is Joe Vitti, and I'm on the board of the Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council, and I am the chair of the ad hoc committee dealing with the issue of the proposed DWP 18 percent water rate surcharge. I would like to thank the council for yesterday's unanimous support for the proposal by Greg Smith to have an independent financial review and analysis of the DWP's request for a water rate increase. The Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council opposes the 18 percent increase, and has called for justification for water rate surcharges that hopefully will be provided by the independent analysis proposed by Councilman Smith. Before our neighborhood council came to its position, it carefully reviewed the responses from the DWP that we received of 10 questions that we asked after their initial presentation to us. The DWP letter to our neighborhood council, and our response dated March 23, 2004, was distributed to all of you. If I was to grade their letter with 10 points for each of the 10 questions and include partial credit, the DWP would have a final score of 55 out of 100, or a failing grade of F minus. I watched the council proceedings yesterday on this issue on TV on Channel 35, and I'd like to compliment Wendy Grul for recognizing the DWP's foolish arguments about the impending bond rate increase. I'd like to thank Tony Cardenas for objecting to this proposed DWP 80 percent increase in his committee early on in the review process. I'd like to thank Antonio Villagosa and Jack Weiss for pointing out that security concerns are very important matters and should not be unrealistically applied to justify cost increases. I'd like to thank Janice Hahn, that made the point that neighborhood councils should see these proposed changes before they are presented to the DWP committees, so they would have adequate time for review and comment. I'd like to thank Alex Padilla for delaying the placing of this proposed DWP increase on the city council agenda, so that neighborhood councils and council members could have the information and data they needed to make an informed position. I'm getting close to the end, I would like to thank Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labange, Mr. Ledlow, Mr. Zine, Mr. Garcetti for all the supporting Mr. Smith's proposal. Finally, I'd like to recommend that when the independent financial review and analysis is completed, that it will be provided as soon as possible to the neighborhood councils and the community organizations across the city. We do not want to repeat the same lack of outreach and communication that we were all plagued by over the last few months. Thank you all again for demonstrating your support for neighborhood councils in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Williams, Brett Richardson, Jeff Tobias. All right, let me call Tom Chavez, James Stewart, a number of these are on the Little League, and I think they were Jimmy Stewart, Jimmy Swist here? Okay. Sergio Jimenez, Kevin Kilroy, Mel Mitchell, Ronald Nagai, Kim Thompson. See, Kim here. And after Kim will be Kathy Lieb, Dr. Catherine Coyle Thompson. Okay, excuse me, Kim, I've been asked to read the rest of the names, so we can have those who are here to line up. Kathy Lieb, Dr. Catherine Coyle Thompson, Susan Tipton, Sherry Mann. Okay, well, we're just asking you to line up, Diana Dixon Davis, Scott Hoaks, Robert Ricketts, and Sharon Brewer.
Hi. Kim?
Hi. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming, or welcome to Granada Hills. I know we're all kind of quiet here, we don't express our feelings much, but I want to really, I really don't want to repeat anything that Joe said, because I really want to thank you for yesterday, and I know it's an opening, and just listening to neighborhood councils, because I know you've created a monster, but I think that they're going to work. And I really just have to say that we oppose Los Lomas, and all those names that you call are people that did leave, but really, we just, we want you to know, and we want it to be on record, that we do oppose Los Lomas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy, let's just leave it at that, I have a hard last name. Hi Dennis, I think you're my person. I'm here on behalf of ASO Region 174. Happy birthday, I don't know if you're still here, I didn't get a chance to get the food or the dessert. I've got a nine-year-old daughter who plays ASO soccer, who's in tears, because her goal is to become 11 and learn to referee with her father. Because at ASO Region 174, they have a program where children who can be 11 and older can learn to referee, and that teaches sportsmanship, compassion, and understanding of the game, and I think that's more important than mud, and ooze, and sludge, and sentiment. Now, here we all are, now supposedly tomorrow, we're going to get a letter telling us we're done, October 31st, okay? Now, the woman who was just up here with the very pretty hairdo, she told me that in Los Angeles, that really what matters is money, and that the issues that get addressed in Los Angeles just really have to do about money. Well, I don't have any money, okay? I haven't paid the mortgage for March, and tomorrow's April 1st, and I don't have the money for that, but I have a love for this region. Do you know why? Because an autistic boy played soccer this year, and he became better, and more out of his autism because of this. His team got into the playoffs. There are two girls who play who are hearing impaired, their parents sign from the sidelines. There was a team on our region called Beans and Crackers. This region, it's not about race, it's not about religion, it is about love of soccer, and volunteers come together. And I think, don't you think that's worth it? Isn't a 25-year legacy worth it? Isn't it? Isn't it? Isn't it more important than ooze, and sludge, and mud? Isn't it important? Don't you have any children who play soccer? Come visit us, we have a snack bar. My daughter wants to be old enough to sell a soda. Okay? MW, you know, I mean, I'm just, you know, I feel the way about politics, the way I feel about religion, that ultimately, it just doesn't matter. You know, that it's just whoever's the biggest and the richest, and I'm asking you, I'm begging you, don't let us slip away. Don't let 25 years of a legacy slip away, just because they're bigger than we are. They tell me that it's their land. Well, so it was the Indians. You know what I'm saying? What does it matter? You know, isn't the valley, you know, it's like, would it be better if we were from the Palisades? Would it be better if I lived in Brentwood? Would it be better if I was Paris Hilton, and I had a kid playing soccer at ASO? You know? I mean, there are 40-year-old women who I am, we're going to get naked and strap ourselves to the fence when the MWD comes to get us, and you don't want to see that, because I've had two cesareans, and I've nursed for two years. Okay? Well, we are ready to do that.
Miss Lieb, thank you, your time is-
Please, I just ask you, please, as a mother perhaps, I don't know you, but it's a very pretty suit. Please save us, okay? Don't let us slip away, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, did you want to comment?
Yes, I'd just like to respond briefly. I don't know if you've been here for the entire council-
I was calling my nine-year-old son, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, then you missed the point about the news racks, the newspaper publishers, The Times, The Daily News, The New York Times, USA Today, and we unanimously voted to regulate news racks. They weren't all in favor of the regulations we're going to impose, the 18 percent water and power increase. This council yesterday unanimously said, no, that's not going to happen, we're going to do some more study before we increase your rates 18 percent. So it doesn't matter where you're from in the city of Los Angeles, this council is very receptive and very responsive, and it is currently 10:11 at night, and we are here very attentive, listening to your plea, to your cries for help. This council is very sensitive. Your councilmember for this district, Greg Smith, is very sensitive to these issues, and we are working with this community on every single issue, and this council works together on issues from the beach to the valley, everything in between, so-
Is that a promise?
Yes, that's a promise.
Okay.
And if you look at the track record of this council, it's been very responsive to community needs, neighborhood needs, homeowner needs, and I don't want to sound like I'm defensive, but I think the record is very clear what this council has done, and how this council stands up to the lobbyists, and stands up to the industry to do what's right for you, the people.
Sir, please forgive me, I don't mean to bash your council, believe me, but what I'm being told is that I am standing in front of a lost cause. That's what I'm being told. And I just, it's like, that's what I'm being told.
Mr. Smith indicated on this issue, he's going to have his deputy meet with MWD and work on this issue.
Thank you.
That was done first thing this meeting today. The other names that I called, would you come forward, anyone who else is still here? Dr. Catherine Coyle Thompson, Susan Tipton, Sherry Mann, Diana Dixon Davis-
Actually, Scott Hoaks.
Scott Hoaks, yeah, anyone whose name is called, if you're close to the microphone, go ahead and speak. Robert Ricketts and Sharon Brewer.
I want to address this issue also. Hello, city council, I am here because a couple years ago, and last year as well, I fell victim to one of the section amendments to our city, and that's the curfew law. Last year, around July, the end of the school year, I was on a date, and at 10:15, we were in the Family Fun Arcade, actually right down the street, playing Dance Dance Revolution, just a detail, and the two police officers came in, pulled me and my date off the machine, wrote us both curfew tickets. And it was really humiliating, actually, and I just thought I'd say that it was very humiliating. And they just told us, you know, it's just a slap on the wrist, go to court, they'll send you to some class. So we went to the court, and it was $250 fine, and I thought that was pretty absurd. I have a friend who got a speeding ticket for going 60 in a 35 mile an hour zone section. His fine was $150, and that is, mine was almost double that, and my question is how me being on a date, in an arcade, spending money on a date with my girlfriend, is more of a threat to the city and should be punished more harshly than someone speeding down a street? I just also wanted to point out another couple things on this sheet with the actual law on it, sorry, I'm shaking, I'm kind of nervous here. I think I'm by 20 years the youngest person here, so, no offense, but I mean, it says here that, yeah, curfew, oh, it's past 10 right now, so I guess I'm violating, well, I'm not violating curfew. But here it says that I cannot be out on any highway avenue curb area playground or other public ground, so I can't be on a public ground. But later down here, in Section C, it says that the minor is attending or going or returning directly home from a public meeting, or a public environment. And I don't understand the difference between a public ground and a public environment. When I got my first curfew ticket, I actually sent an email to everyone who was on the board, that was two years ago. The only response I got basically stated that you guys didn't even read them, it was more of like a thank you for your concern email, that was my response. Someone sent me a copy of the law, thank you, I have several of them. And just one more thing that I wanted to point out, is that it says it is legal if the minor is upon an errand by his or her spouse, 18 years of age or older. So me, 17-year-old man, if I have a spouse, if I'm married to someone who's over 18, I guess it would be legal for me to go out with them after 10 o'clock. However, if I'm out with my 28-year-old brother who's a doctor, that doesn't count as a guardian, as far as this law is concerned. And I just think that it's an absurd law, and that it needs to be removed, or the penalty should be very much less severe. Because I've received two of these tickets, it's cost me $500, that's a full month's work. I work at Cold Stone Creamery, that's a full month's work pay for me, and I still go out after 10 o'clock. I honestly, I come home from school, I do my homework, because I don't like doing it late at night, and then I like to go out with my friends and have a good time. And that's just the way that kids are, and if they're causing problems, then yes, they should be punished. But for the things I have been ticketed doing, I just don't feel that's right. Whereas in Hollywood, I walk down the street, and I see kids just drinking and smoking right by police officers. But in this valley, you know, I can be in an arcade and be ticketed, I don't think that's right. Sorry for going over the time limit.
Thank you.
Actually, I want to address that also, but I would, I'm Diana Dixon Davis, I'm the vice president of the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council, I'm also legislation chair for the Chatsworth High School PTSA. First, I want to say kudos on the vote on the rate study, DWP rate study. Number two, Maglev, I think it's a project in search of, a solution in search of a project, what you really need is light rail or something right into the train stations. We had a study here in the valley of the future of LA, and everyone applauded when our group suggested, this is a solution, not Maglev. But to go on to this, also the notification on the buildings, there should be 500 feet or 500 people, whichever one reaches the most people, because right now, we are not being notified as a member of the Land Use Committee, we don't hear about things sometimes until they've been through the process, such as that Hallicourt. And I also wanted to mention on the magazine racks, I mean, newspaper racks, your neighborhood council could be an asset in this, they could be some of your eyes and ears in the community and do some of the policing. But in addition, the main reason here is because of the PTA has sent me from Chatsworth High School about this curfew issue. Frankly, the city of LA makes it hard to be a parent. We have this case of this young man going out doing ordinary things, and he gets arrested. Do you know that if you're over 14, if you're under the age of 14, you can't go to a movie past 9:00 PM? I don't think our movie theaters know this, they certainly sell movie tickets to kids and allow them to go to movies past 9:00 PM. Two brothers, one in college, the other one in high school, they go out to the movies, they have ice cream, the boy gets arrested. This is a Saturday night in the summer, because he's having ice cream after 10:00 PM with his older brother. Another case, two high school graduates going down to get a quart of milk, it was late Sunday, Saturday evening, it was hot all day, it was in the middle of the summer, they got arrested, because it was 10:30, and they're getting a quart of milk from the local 7-Eleven. A mother, I have a friend who took her son out to have pizza and movies with her son and their friends, the police started harassing them, she had to lie to keep the kids from all being arrested for curfew violation. Right now, the law says that a minor under the age of 18 has to be in the presence of their, after 10:00 PM, must be in the presence of their legal guardian or their parents. You can't have grandma and grandpa come and help you out, pick them up late in the afternoon, you can't carpool with other parents right now. I know when my kids were in high school, we regularly, I would take them, my friend would go pick up the kids, we'd have a group going together. All those kids were legally, technically eligible for being arrested. This is an unreasonable law, and it needs modification. Section 45.03 could easily be modified, for instance, giving written permission, if a minor is out with other parents, with other competent adults, grandparents, aunts and uncles, adult siblings, they could be given written permission to accompany the minor to events, to pick them up from work or school or whatever, school events. Right now, the law really makes almost every parent a criminal, if you want to be technical about it, you could- about it. You could go out almost any night and find parents picking up kids from carpool and activities after 10:00 PM, especially since this applies every day of the year, 365 days of the year, all summer long, all weekend long. There's simple modifications that can make it more reasonable and I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon-Davis.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else whose name I called? Please step forward.
My name is Sharon Brewer. I'm the Encino Neighborhood Council Park Rep. On March 19th, I came before you speaking against a $6,000 fee waiver for the Persian New Year at Lake Balboa on March 28th. At that time, I stated the following. The permit states $750 park fee, $250 ranger fee, total fee, $1,000. They have the use of Lake Balboa and Woodley Park plus two overflow parking lots from 6:00 AM till 7:00 PM. The event sponsor can charge for parking. Estimated crowd size, 10,000 plus. The event was this past Sunday. Before the event, I was told by District 6 and Valley Region, the park was open to the public. And with regards to booths, District 6 said very few booths. Rec and Parks said 10 booths by pavilions. On Sunday, I finally found out what was really going on at the park. Booths set up at the lake were parking lot number three, 52 booths in the parking lot. Parking lot two, three booths. Parking lot one, 15 booths. Bottom of the hill by the waterfall, nine. East side of the park on the grass, three. Total booths, 82. I repeat, 82, not the 10 Rec and Parks told me. Plus three pavilions and four benches were used to sell sodas. Of the above, 82 booths or tents were selling food, drinks or merchandise. Some of the merchandise sold for over $900 and as high as $2,200. As for the park being open to the public at around 7:15 AM, someone from the Persian event tried to keep me from parking inside the park. I was told, I was, I told them I was there for a 5K, 10K walk for Victory for Victims and plan to spend the day at the park. I told them the park is open to the public and proceeded to drive in. I have 19 pages of pictures of the two events at Lake Balboa, one in the kite area and one around the lake, Sunday, March 28th. And the aftermath, the trash left around Lake Balboa on Monday, March 29th. I also took videos. To summarize, the park charged $1,000 for this person to take and use the park. The city waived $6,000. The event sponsor charged $10 per car for car, for parking. Booths or tents were selling merchandise, 82 tents, not 10, and Valley Region, oops, not 10 as stated by Valley Region. As far as I can see from the permit, the park only got $10,000 for this event and a lot of trash.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. I'm going to ask you if you would turn that into my office. I will share it with Councilmember Weiss, but I do think that when we had that waiver fee, we did ask for a report in the aftermath and I think your information we should match up with Rec and Park as we're going to be looking at the whole waiver of permit fee or appropriate fees for charges for this kind of event. So I think that was very, very useful information. I just ask you to turn it in to us. Ms. Hahn?
I also think that we, at the same time, asked for a report back from our department on how they are communicating with our neighborhood councils because that was also an issue that you had requested several times to just get good information about the festival and you found that very difficult to have communication. So we also asked for them to answer us in terms of how they are communicating with neighborhood councils who, again, are impacted by this kind of a festival in their neighborhood.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, just in defense of the park system, there's a park advisory board and they should be responsive. If they're not, they should be. And also vice versa, on your neighborhood councils throughout the city, if you have parks whether large or small, you should make sure you have a chair for those park advocates there so everybody could work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Next speaker?
I'm Bob Ricketts. My wife and I have lived in Granada Hills for the past 25 years. During that time, I've been active in community organizations such as Neighborhood Watch and at present, I'm a member of the Board of Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council and a member of the Board of our Property Owners Association. As a result, I hear the concerns of our residents and know the problems that we see in the North Valley. However, today, my comments are made on behalf of my wife and myself as residents, not as representative of the organizations I just mentioned. And I appreciate the opportunity to express our very grave concerns regarding the development of the Los Lomas Project at the north end of the San Fernando Valley. You'll hear from others about the huge impact of a new mini-city will have on the traffic and environment, but we are concerned, deeply concerned about a unique situation affecting everything and everyone in the North Valley. As you know from information presented at prior council meetings in the years since the Northridge earthquake, an extensive study of past seismic activity in Southern California and predictions of future events has been conducted by federal, state and local agencies and universities. The results were presented at the Northridge Earthquake 10th Anniversary Event that was held at Caltech Pasadena on 17 January. Its theme was learning from the past, planning for the future. I was fortunate to be able to attend some of the seminars and talk to some of the expert presenters and exhibitors from Caltech and other agencies. The recurring theme was that the area roughly defined by the junctions of Balboa Boulevard, San Fernando Road, Routes 5 and 14 is the most seismic active area in Southern California. It has the highest concentration of identified surface faults as well as slope failure zones in the surrounding hills and liquefaction zones in the flatter areas. As you know, this is the area of the Sunshine Canyon landfill and the MWD and DWP facilities. I've got maps, other things that I picked up at the meetings. And after considering the many things we've seen in the past few years, planning to add a high-density mini-city across the freeway from one of the nation's largest dumps, everything sitting on top of one of the most active seismic areas in our state does not seem very logical. Therefore, we believe that before the Los Lomas Project is allowed to move any further, every decision-maker in the city, county and state must consider the future and answer questions such as, can anyone even design a new high-density development so that it can survive for the next century in the I-5 and the I-14 area?
Okay, Mr. Ricketts, I'm going to ask you, this is not before today, it will take many, many, many hearings and it's not even clear whether it will be part of a city of Los Angeles or city of Santa Clarita.
Exactly.
So those are issues yet to be decided, but I can assure you, we are all alert to making sure that nothing goes through without full public hearing and significant advance notice.
I'll see you at those meetings. And thank you for being out in the valley this evening. We've enjoyed having a chance to talk to you.
Thank you. Was there any other speaker's name I called who is still here? If not, then I would, will close the public hearing and again, say thank you to the stalwarts who are still here, both in the audience and on the city council. And again, congratulations and thank you to Councilmember Smith who hosted tonight's evening, as well as St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church who has just been a marvelous host and again, our wonderful ITA people who have helped make this all presentable, not only to the people in the audience, but to the general public at large.
Madam President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
We have potions, post and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Are there any announcements? No announcements? Mr. Garcetti has an announcement.
Just one quick announcement. Tomorrow on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, John Belushi posthumously will be getting his star. Anybody who'd like to come down, 11:30, that'll be on the Walk of Fame, a place that we're going to clean up from the news rack soon, but we invite everybody to be there, so welcome.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to thank Greg Smith again for a wonderful evening and all of your staff. It was an incredible night. I told Greg, I lived till I was four years old, just a few blocks from here and grew up in your district and still frequent your district, actually. But you're a wonderful representative and thank you for a great night.
Mr. Ludlow.
I just wanted to acknowledge Alan Scoban and the LA Police Commission. Last night, they held a police commission meeting in the 10th Council District. It was a packed house. We had about 300 people there. And Alan, I know you're around here, you stayed all night, you did the pledge of allegiance tonight and Chief Bratton was here tonight. We really appreciate that. But people in South Los Angeles and Mid-City really appreciated the presence of the LA Police Commission last night and appreciate the work that all the men and women at LAPD are doing. So thank you again.
Mr. Labange?
I wasn't going to speak, but from the fine constituent of the 12th District, spoke about Amelvede Park. I reminisced that about 40 years ago, I slept in the canyon just west at St. Vincent de Paul Ranch Camp. We used to take a bus from 7th and Alvarado all the way out to the valley and it was absolutely beautiful and I remember the great eucalyptus groves. So it's so wonderful that you recite that. It's good to be in this part of the city.
Thank you for that announcement, Mr. Labange.
And another announcement more important, on the 28th of April, Councilmember Wendy Gruehl and Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Weiss and myself will have the first regional council committee meeting. This is very important to come out and focus on the Ventura Freeway, on issues related to traffic and impacted areas there. You'll get notices and make sure all the neighborhood councils come out because we would like to see a more regional approach to our council where we can listen directly to you and your concerns. And then there'll be a North Valley Regional Meeting at some point in the future and throughout the city. But thank you. And let's thank Cindy Misakowski for running a great meeting today, too.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Zine?
I just want to thank the fine representatives from the valley, even Valley Votes here, Joe. Good to see you all. The fine people from the San Fernando Valley that turned out tonight from all communities. I know that members of Canoga Park were here, Tarzana, a full packed audience. And I thank Greg and his staff for putting this together. I know it's not easy to get the community involved and to get them to come out. And as you've seen tonight, your city council is coming to your community and we do this on a regular basis throughout the city of Los Angeles. So we are listening, we appreciate your support and we appreciate working with all of you, the neighborhood councils, the community groups and even Valley Vote, Joe. You're all wonderful people. Thank you all. And then just one more comment for Tom Labange. If you'd be, if you'd always behave yourself, your wife wouldn't kick you out, so you wouldn't have to go sleep in the park. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I want to thank all my colleagues for hanging out in Northridge tonight. It was a long night, but I appreciate you coming out, particularly Wendy Gruehl who gave up a public meeting she already arranged for tonight and sent notices out, she canceled it. So thank you for coming back to your home. And for Ms. Hahn, who unfortunately just walked out, but she and I share the distinction of having the farthest drive to go to City Hall each day, so tonight she had a two-hour drive to get back to San Pedro and I really appreciate her being here. And again, Cindy, for your leadership tonight, thank you. And the community, we're certainly proud of you all tonight. Thank you so much.
All right. Are there any adjourning tributes? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. The council is adjourned. Thank you.